Good afternoon, if everyone, good evening, if everyone would please take their seats. We're gonna get started. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, BAC 6:30 PM, Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, Board Meeting. We're going to begin our Board Meeting with the invocation by Pastor Leonard Himes and then the pledge of allegiance. If everyone was staying.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Our Father is, we assemble tonight, Lord, we, not only to do the business of government, but Lord, you'd begin to work in our county that we would be people of grace, as we think tonight of the grace that you bestow upon us, and our dealings and workings with others, that we would be people that would show that grace. So Father, help us in this meeting and all the business that needs to be done, decisions, pray you'd bless those in that capacity, and, Lord, I ask you to put your hand on our county with protection, provision, and keep us sustaining. As we close this last quarter of this year, Lord, we need your touch, not only in our lives, but on this place. So meet with us tonight, and we'll certainly thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. Parks Master Plan Update. I have our Executive Director Jonathan Penn to please come forward.
Good day, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and Henry County residents. Today, I'm going to present to you an update of our comprehensive parks master plan that we got approved last year, and we are well upon our way with implementing things within our comprehensive parks master plan. Just want to point out that the plan was approved August of last year, and within that plan, there were a couple priorities, two of the top priorities, when we did the surveys and got the feedback from everyone involved in this process, including residents of Henry County, they wanted to see improvements, maintenance to existing parks and facilities, as well as development of new additional facilities, amenities in existing parks. I'm gonna go through some of the parks and some of the things that we've done in these parks, Sandy Ridge, Cochran, Bud Kelly, JP Mosley, North Mount Carmel, and Nash Farm Park. At Sandy Ridge Parks, we've done some field improvements, we've laser graded all of those fields over there, we've done some new concrete work over there to make it a lot more accessible, new fencing, we've made improvements to the BMX track, as well as we repaved the walking trail over there. Some upcoming additional things we're going to do is some additional landscaping, we're gonna redo the, renovate the tennis courts, we're looking to do a tennis court and a pickleball court there in that area, and we're going to replace that BMX concessions over there. At Cochran Park, we've done the same thing with the field improvements, we've laser graded all of those, we have redone all the fencing, we redid the parking lot, new parking, surfacing, striping, there's a new batting cage out there, new playground, and thank you again to the Kiwanis Club for their donation to assist with that playground. And upcoming, we will be installing the concession that you all approved about a month ago, once that is delivered, as well as some Phase II improvements along the property line. And we had goats out there. I know everyone loves the goats. At Bud Kelly Park, we are installing currently the new disc-off course, 18-hole, pro-level, intermediate, and beginner-level course. This will be a state-of-the-art disc-off course that will be at Bud Kelly Park, that everyone will travel to utilize. It will complement what we have at JP Mosley Park, and we will be hosting some tournaments, disc-off tournaments, with utilizing both of those disc-off courses. At JP Mosley Park, we installed a new fitness court. We also did some improvements in the recreation facility. We redid the entire, the gym floors in there, as well as the lobby floors, some new furniture, the AC units are being replaced right now. Some upcoming things we're gonna do in the facility is a new fitness area. We are installing a new playground that was approved, so once that is built and delivered, we will install a new playground and pavilion shade structures, outdoor pickleball courts, as well as a dog park area. At North Mount Carmel Park, we all know about that beautiful recreation facility we built out there. It's a centerpiece of what we do, and everyone has come out to see that facility. We've improved accessibility, we have new walkways over there, we'll also have the new digital sign outside that everyone seems to like because it provides the information that they need to know about the park. Some upcoming things is the playground that was approved will be installed once it's completed and delivered, new pavilions, and the new dog park area. We have the equipment, we're waiting on a few more pieces, but that will be installed as well. Nash Farm Park, new deck at the lake, that's coming along, we're almost finished with that, as well as the black box theater improvements. We had to replace the roof, we did a couple other things to that, but that is looking good over there as well. Other projects that we have upcoming are at Village United Park, Hidden Valley Park, Heritage Park, and Gary Barn Park. Village United Park, we will be installing the new fitness court that was approved, that is almost at its end, some things have been delivered, we're waiting on the concrete to be installed, and then we'll, the installer will be ready to go to install some of those other pieces over there to get that fitness court up and running at Village Park, Village United Park. At Hidden Valley Park, we'll be doing some field improvements, fencing work, improved accessibility with some concrete work, and a new playground over there, some of the things we'll begin doing over at Hidden Valley Park. Heritage Park, we'll be doing some improvements to the Knolling House, we already have the PO for that, so they'll be starting on that very soon. That is gonna be the location of our first skate park with the Tony Hawk Foundation, and Darby, and Trevor for that skate park. We are excited about that, and just to let everybody know, Darby has created a video promoting fundraising for the skate park, so we'll pub that out and get that out to everyone so that we can continue to promote the fundraising on their side for the skate park. In addition, we have our trunk or treat and Henry Night Out at the end of October, and they will be there with a wrestling ring to help promote fundraising for the skate park, so we're excited about that as well. Also, at Heritage Park, we will be building a new state-of-the-art playground, utilizing funds as well from the Kiwanis that they donated to help with that playground. Oh, and the bridge, we are renovating the bridge, the pedestrian bridge that goes from the senior center over to the park, that is being renovated as well. Gary Barn Park will be doing, again, laser grading, field improvements there, some fence work, improving the accessibility, and a new playground at Gary Barn Park in the old section of the park. We also have SDS agreement with the cities, which is the service delivery agreement, and for those parks that are in those cities, which we have Warren Hoda Park, Tanger Station Park, Richard Craig Park, Avalon Park, Alexander Park, those are some of the parks that the city owns, but through that SDS agreement, we maintain those parks. Within that agreement, the cities are required to submit 50% of their impact fees to help with capital projects and improvements to those parks. We did receive a check from Warren Hoda Park, maybe not Warren, Locust Grove, City of Locust Grove, to do some, go ahead and start some improvements at Warren Hoda Park and Tanger Station, but we're also gonna go ahead and start doing some improvements at Richard Craig Park. Some of the improvements at Warren Hoda Park is field improvements, we'll be laser grading all of those fields, improve the accessibility, a new concession that was, that's already been ordered, that will be installed once it's delivered, and tennis court renovations at Warren Hoda Park. At Tanger Station, again, field improvements, improved accessibility, and new playground. There currently is not a playground at Tanger Station, so this will be a brand-new playground there. At Richard Craig Park, we'll be doing the, installing new lighting with Georgia Power, and the new Sunshine League Field, which is our therapeutic recreation special needs field that we have out there, we will be renovating that and improving that field. Once we receive the impact fees from McDonough, City of McDonough, for some additional improvements, then we'll continue to move along with some of those other improvements there at Richard Craig Park. Any questions?
Yeah, I do have a question. So you received the impact fees from the City of Locust Grove, but we hadn't received it from the City of McDonough?
Not to date.
Okay, and how long have we been waiting on that, and what do they owe us?
We do not know the amount because they collect their impact fees, but we have not received any to date, and we've been asking for, at least for the past two years that I know of.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from?
Five years.
Five years, okay. Yes.
If you could, I know we've been working on banks, Miki D. Cochran, can you just kinda give the residents an update of what has been going on there and what maybe our future plans are? Because I know there are some safety, traffic issues that many of them are having.
Yes, and thank you for bringing that up. Right now, we have temporary parking, so when we built the facility, you know, it's beautiful, and we have the new parking area, but it's not enough parking because of the football program that is there, and when they have games on Saturdays, a lot of times those parking spots fill up, people park along the street because it's just, it's not enough parking. So temporarily, we DOT, our very own DOT, went out there after we had cleared, we had a sliver of piece of land left that we could get rid of some of the trees, and we created a temporary parking area there, our DOT did, but we are getting that engineered, and we will have a full-blown parking lot right there as well, to help with some, to alleviate the street parking.
And what about security cameras at the park? Where are we at on that? Are we still working on that?
We are still working on that. We do have flock cameras at all of our parks, we're working on additional cameras, and we are working with IT diligently with that, as well as our broadband project, so we have to get internet at these, at these sites. So the broadband project that we're working with, with the company that we have brought on board, they actually have gotten started, and they've done Mount Carmel already, and they're moving diligently to all the other parks.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just want to thank you, you and the staff. I watched all the improvements at Sandy Ridge.
Thank you, sir.
And I wish they had the before and after pictures, but I don't. Hopefully y'all took some.
We do, we have a lot of pictures.
But from the, for Sandy Ridge community, and I say thank you for all the hard work, and looking forward to all the improvements for Warren Hoda and Tanger as well.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Robb, Vice Chair.
But I just want to say, thank you. You guys have put in a lot of work, and I'm like looking at all these other parks to make sure you're, you know, doing the fields, and it's taken us to the next level here in Henry County, and you said that you were gonna do it, and you are doing that. I just want to say, even with the goats, hopefully we can expand that, having them in the community, because I know a lot of HOAs, they can probably use that with their, you know, the ponds that they have, and so maybe they can take note of what those goats can do, and, you know, and do that as well. So you guys have set the bar, and we greatly appreciate you.
Thank you, and we do plan to use the goats much more in this upcoming year.
Commissioner.
We could use some goats at Warren Hoda.
Fantastic job at our Parks and Recreation, it really adds to the quality of life for our residents. And just for, for those who attend Richard Craig Park, me, JP, Brian Dixon, Mr. Ramirez, we walked the park on, on Monday, just to go over some of the improvements that we're gonna do for Richard Craig Park, so a lot of exciting things coming to Richard Craig Park. We're gonna make sure that we go ahead and, we're gonna make sure that we go ahead and, go ahead and get started on improving the park, even though we are waiting on impact fees from the City of McDonough, we're not gonna let that hinder what we're trying to do at the park, so thank you very much for all that you do.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, JP.
Thank you.
For all of your hard work, your team, Parks and Recreation, you guys do an amazing job.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is District Four Appointment to the Zoning Advisory Board. Commissioner Price.
Just want to make this opportunity to thank Robert Copac, who served as the District Representative for the Zoning Advisory Board. He had an opportunity to purchase a different property that was outside of District Number Four, and so he had to resign, and so we are excited to nominate or recommend Ms. Katie Bell. Some of you may not know her by name, but if you've ever eaten at Macon Street Tacos, she is the owner of Macon Street Tacos, and so we're just excited to be bringing her onboard, and hopefully, again, she'll work to help us to continue to move the county forward. And so, again, she wanted to be here tonight, she had a conflict of scheduling, she's at the Governor's Tourism Conference in Savannah, I would love to be there, but that's where she is tonight, and so we're just grateful again to have the opportunity for her to serve the community. Yes, so with that said, I would like to make a motion that Katie Bell will be added to the Zoning Advisory Board, representing District Four, replacing Robert Copac.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. If we can have the County Manager, Sheriff Matthews, to please come forward and read our consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, September 23rd, at 6:30 PM. Under Community Development Block Grant, we have a resolution approving the reallocation of the American Rescue Plan Act Fiscal Recovery Funds in the amount of $198,062, and to amend a current sub-recipient agreement. Under Financial Services, we have a resolution awarding RFP number 25-82 for multifunctional copier leases countywide to Nova Technology Solutions. This is a 60-month, five-year lease as a unit price contract. Under the Henry County Police Department, we have a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Henry County Board of Education regarding school crossing guards. We also have a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Henry County Board of Education regarding the stop-arm agreement. Under Human Resources, we have a resolution awarding a contract for occupational medical services to Caduceus USA as a unit price agreement with no fixed quantities for one year, with two mutually agreed-upon annual extensions. Under SWS, we have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 817.98 square feet of right-of-way and a permanent easement of 9,299.32 square feet in Land Lot 110 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19 for the Jonesboro Road widening, parcel 65, T-SWAS Project, District 5. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 9,916.68 square feet of right-of-way in Land Lot 83 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road widening, parcel 72, T-SWAS Project, located in District 5. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,784.48 square feet of right-of-way, a permanent easement of 1,662.35 square feet in Land Lot 110 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road widening, parcel 70, T-SWAS Project, located in District 5. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,056.94 square feet of temporary easement in Land Lot 110 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road widening, parcel 75, T-SWAS Project, located in District 5. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 5,018.23 square feet of right-of-way, a permanent easement of 2,956.89 square feet, and a temporary easement of 218.88 square feet in Land Lot 110 of the 6th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, Jonesboro Road widening, parcel 60, T-SWAS Project, located in District 5. And we have a resolution approving the Georgia Power Utility Relocation Estimated Cost for Mill Road widening in the amount of $790,270, District 5, T-SWAS Project. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions? Okay, okay.
Not 75.
So it should be parcel 74 for letter D, my apologies. So do I need to reread that one?
Can you make just, Stephanie, can you just make the correction that it should be partial 74?
Four instead of 75.
Not 75.
Thank you, Commissioner. And that was for letter D, Madam Clerk.
Is there any questions from the Board on any items on the consent agenda?
Thank you, Madam County Manager, and I just wanted to just point out to the citizens of District 5 that we are really plowing forward on gaining the right-of-way for the widening of Jonesboro Road. It's eagerly anticipated, and long anticipated, but I think that takes us up to, is that 89% of right-of-way required, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so looking at finishing all the right-of-way acquisitions by the end of this year, and looking to start widening Jonesboro Road, thank you, Jesus, in the first part of 2026. I pray every day, so.
Amen.
So thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Awesome. Anyone else? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, then we'll move to our regular agenda, Community Development Block Grant. This is a public hearing. Shannon?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the Board, and pillars of our Henry County community. This evening, yes, had to make certain I was on the right parap点, excuse me, this evening, we are holding a public hearing, we are presenting for you all a resolution approving the proposed Federal Physical Year 2024 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, commonly known as our CAPR. It is, we're requesting authorization for execution and submittal of the report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. As a recipient of the Community Development Block Grant Program and Home Investment Partnership Program funding, Henry County is required to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for the 2024 physical year. The CAPR provides for HUD, as well as the residents of Henry County, an opportunity to evaluate the overall progress of the programs in carrying out the priorities and specific objectives and goals identified in the county's consolidated plan and its annual action plans. It also describes the actions, changes, and accomplishments during the physical 2024 year resulting from the use of Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership funding through HUD. Staff published a public notice for the draft CAPR in the Saturday, September 6, 2025 edition of the Henry Herald. Copies of the drafted report were made available earlier during the Business Week, I believe on that previous Tuesday, for the public's review and comment. Let me see. They were available at numerous public locations to include recreation centers, senior centers, and libraries. Additionally, access was granted on the county's website. and libraries. Additionally, access was granted on the county's website. Specifically, accomplishments resulting from the Community Development Block Grant Program include the completion of 20 households receiving benefit from housing rehab, 1,703 individuals received benefit from public service funding, public facility and infrastructure improvements impacted 886 households, and public housing organizations, that is partnerships through the two public housing agencies in Henry County, impacted 14 households. Administration funding was also expended to cover the cost of staff delivering these services. In total, the county utilized CDBG funding, just over $900,000 for the activities described. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have. And again, this is a public hearing.
Okay, we'll do a public hearing first. Stephanie, did anyone sign up for this?
Any.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to come and speak in the public hearing on this matter, Community Development Block Grant? Okay, public hearing is closed. Is there any questions from the board, any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Next item is SPOSS.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners and pillars of Henry County. Our next resolution is a resolution to approve a budget amendment. The budget amendment shown is 2 million. That has been updated to 1,580,547, which is available in SPOSS Five collections, and a supplemental agreement for Southeastern in that amount of 1,997,226,087. We'll go through why we need a supplemental agreement. So a supplemental agreement is needed for the flipping extension. A flipping extension was awarded back in April of 2024 to Southeastern Side Development. And as I mentioned, a supplemental agreement in that amount is needed to cover the costs related to the bridge and rock embankment at Walnut Creek, and also to add some sidewalks. As you can see on this slide, this is where the budget amount is coming from, from the different District Two accounts. And then the difference is coming from the flipping road extension itself. This, as you can see, this will provide that needed north-south connectivity to Jonesboro Road and also to the north side of the county, going all the way towards Stockbridge. As you can see, work has started. Clearing, grading has started. Once this is approved, we can move forward with the, with the bridge. Right now, it's kind of, kind of on hold because of the additional rock embankment needed. I'll take any questions at this time.
Are there any questions from the board?
Commissioner Price? Did you say the amendment was 2 million or 1.5?
It was incorrect. It's been, the supplemental agreement is the 1.5 million.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, just once again, you know, for the residents of District Five who are here and listening, we are committed to improving the infrastructure in the district. And thank you for adding the sidewalks. I know that was, that was my ask, that we add sidewalks, especially as we are near the Dust Town School Cluster. But thank you for this. Like I said, it's necessary, which is some of the issues they ran into with construction, with the embankments, and also adding the sidewalks. I just want to say thank you for your diligence in making it happen.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And with that, I move to approve.
Okay, so got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. No further questions. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is planning and zoning. A resolution for Henry County Board of Commissioners to transmit the state require CIE update.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and pillars of the community. Each year, Henry County is required to submit its capital improvement element and a report to Georgia Department of Community Affairs in order to maintain our qualified local government status. The CIE is a vital component of the county's comprehensive plan and serves as a strategic guide for determining the timing, location, and financing of new capital facilities. The following slide present projects listed submitted by various county departments along with corresponding impact fee allocations. This transmittal also includes project information and funding sources provided by the Henry County Water Authority. Staff is requesting authorization from the Board of Commissioners to transmit this information to DCA for official review, and this is a public hearing.
Any questions from the board? Comments on the board? Okay. All right, so this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the request? We'll have 10 minutes to come forward to address the board. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition of the request? Likewise, 10 minutes to come forward and collectively address the board. Public hearing is now closed. I'd like to call for a motion. Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
Next item is Comp Amendment 25-01, Dr. Horton of Conyers.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members and pillars of the community. Tonight, I will present their rezoning requests and comprehensive plan amendment for a property located at Mount Carmel and Jones Road. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from RA, Residential Agricultural, to R2, Single Family Residence, and a comp plan amendment for medium-density to low-density suburban. These changes would allow the development to allow single-family residential subdivision served by individual septic systems. The property is highlighted on the map before you, showing the surrounding properties, single-family residences with zoning classifications of R1, RA, R2, creating a context of similar residential uses. The future land use map designation is medium-density, which supports up to four dwelling units per acre when public sewer is available. Because public sewer is more than a mile away, the service is not available to this site. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the future land use map from medium-density to low-density suburban. The current medium-density suburban designation supports four dwelling units per acre when public sewer is available, whereas low-density suburban designates zero-to-two dwelling units on a septic. This slide shows the boundary survey provided by the applicant. It illustrates the two parcels together, which is comprised of 110.885 acres. These are elevations provided by the applicant. These are comments that we've received from multiple departments, including that water service is available, but sewer service is not available. Using the ratio for fire service, there will be no need for additional fire staff, and the closest fire station will be Fire Station Number Five. The rezoning request and comprehensive plan amendment supports a density of 0.88 units per acre, which fits with the low-density suburban. Because water service is not available, a comprehensive amendment is necessary to allow the subdivision on septic. Planner finds the property to be suitable for development with access via Mount Carmel Road and Jones Road. Please see the site plan provided by the applicant. They are proposing 98 units. Staff recommends approval. On March 10th, the Zoning Advisory Board recommended denial of the request of the comprehensive plan as well as the rezoning. However, staff recommends approval to the comprehensive plan amendment allowing low-density suburban as well as the rezoning request from RA to R2 septic with the following conditions. And I'm prepared to answer any questions you all may have this evening.
So are these, these two separate things here?
Yes, there's a comprehensive plan amendment as well as a rezoning.
So do we need to do two separate public hearings, one for the comp plan and one for the zoning, since they're two separate things? Somebody tell me something.
So what we're asking is that each side have 20 minutes to speak, so we can take care of both of them at the same time. And then when you do the vote, you make a motion for the rezoning and make a motion for the comp plan. Okay, so each group has 20 minutes to speak.
So we get to vote on them separately?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, then I'll open it up for public hearing. Those wishing to speak in favor of the items, please come forward, including the applicant.
3562 Hammer Sham at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, 30081. Oops. Apologizing. The site plan, the survey is shown as indicated by staff with a little over 110 acres for the property here at the intersection of Mount Carmel and Jones Road. Again, we are seeking the land use change from medium-density residential to low-density residential. We believe that that is suitable in light of the fact that the property does not have access to public sewer. We believe that that also will help to control some of the density increase within the area so that we are not, in fact, placing additional units in an area that has limited resources with regards to sewer capacity. We are seeking to rezone, I apologize, from RA to R2, not to R1. Again, that will allow for 30,000-square-foot lots, and those would be accessible for sewer or allowable for sewer. This is the site plan that has been proposed by Dr. Horton. You can see here that we do comply with all of the 30,000-square-foot minimum lot requirements. We do have some lots that are slightly larger than that. We have preserved all of the environmentally sensitive areas within the interior of the property and believe that this is a suitable site plan. We will have our access off of both Mount Carmel and off of Jones Road in the spots indicated. Believe that that is sufficient for fire and safety purposes to allow for access into the site. With regards to the proposed project details, again, we would be on R2 septic. The 98 lots would allow for a density at .88 units per acre. Gross density, with our minimum lot size width being 125 feet, we will have 40-foot setbacks along the front, side setbacks at 15 feet, so basically 30 feet or more between the homes that will be located on the site, and then rear setbacks at 30 feet. We have worked, and I think the challenge that we have had on this site has been what the units will look like. And you saw the initial photos that were provided to staff. And we have been working to upgrade those. We know that the county is moving in a direction which you all want, a nicer, better-quality home within the county that is being presented. And Horton is certainly making its efforts to try and meet you where you are. We believe that these are an improvement over the initial ones that were provided. But we also know that we can, are more than happy to continue to work towards that better product and hope that this is certainly moving in a direction that would be more acceptable to the county. With that, we are proposing a slight change to the condition that has been proposed by staff, one of which was planning and zoning, to provide final approval for all elevations before final plat submittal. Approved elevations shall be within substantial compliance with the elevations presented at the Board of Commissioners meeting. We recognize that there are still some challenges with the models that we have presented today. And so what we were asking would be to change the district, or sorry, to change the elevation condition to read as follows. The District Commissioner, together with the planning and zoning staff, shall provide final approval for all elevations before final plat submittal. The plan book shall include a minimum of six facade designs, together with a proposed color palette for the community. We believe that that would provide some additional protection to the county to ensure that Commissioner Lewis, or whoever that we assume continues at the time that the homes would become available, but that the District Five Commissioner would be working in tandem with the planning department and with the developer builder to make certain that we have a product that is reflective of the types of homes that the commissioner would like to see within the district. And so with that, we would respectfully request approval of the application, but we also understand if there is still work to be done with regards to the facade elevations, that we would ask for a deferral for no more than 30 days to give us time to work through the final tweaks with regards to the overall elevation design so that we have something to move forward with that still would be conditioned on those plan books, but comes closer into what this board would like to see. And any comments and feedback that we can get on the home designs, we certainly would appreciate as we continue to move through this process. But we're really excited about the project. We think that it is appropriate for the neighborhood. We're not trying to oversaturate by building at that medium-density level, which would allow up to four units per acre with homes probably smaller in size and look than what you all might otherwise want. We know that some of the homes were built 20 years ago in lots and in areas that had larger lots and also larger homes. Times have changed, but we also understand what the objectives are of Times have changed, but we also understand what the objectives are of the county, and so what we are hoping is to build a quality product on the site at a density that is certainly much less than what other components and other areas within this portion of District Five would provide for. And again, something that we hope will be very well-received by the public as they come into this space. So with that, again, we would ask for a recommend, we would ask for approval, but if we cannot get that this evening, then we would ask for some additional time to work with District Five on the facade designs. Thank you.
Anyone wishing to come speak in favor? Stephanie, if you could change the clock. Anyone wish to come speak in opposition? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Greetings, Board. Angie Collins, Crystal Lake Golf and Country Club. You know, I see that they have attempted to make some improvements, but I have to tell you, after looking at, doing a little research regarding D.R. Horton period, I was, I have some neighbors that have D.R. Horton homes, and they don't seem to be very pleased with some of the things that have been done. But just to give you an idea of what I'm talking about, I looked at, looked it up on Yelp. There were forty-four reviews, and out of those forty-four, it starts off with, "I wish I could give this company a zero star. The customer service is beyond poor," and they just go downhill from there. So that was very concerning, but I drove that area, and the young lady that just spoke said the homes are twenty years older, but yes, they are because they were built with much larger lots. But some of the things that I find concerning are that they want to cram ninety-eight homes there, but there were no amenities. There's nothing to do. There's just more and more homes. There's nothing, if you have children that are going to be in the neighborhood, what are they supposed to do for entertainment? There was nothing, so that was a concern. When I look at it, some of the upgrades seem, there are some minor upgrades that are being made, but they still seem to be a little bit basic to me. They don't really enhance the area. Because what I'm seeing is, when builders are coming to Henry County, they're getting the word, they're getting the understanding that they have to come, they have to come correct and bring some things that add value to the area. I didn't see it. I saw a whole bunch of homes. I saw a builder trying to do what they typically do, is make as much money as they can in as short a period as they can. So that's concerning. It doesn't enhance our area, it actually takes away. So I, I'm not sure about this, but there has been a rumor that that land is actually rumored to be risky. It's waterlogged, and so for them to be putting that kind of, those kind of homes, they were no amenities, I just don't see the value that they're bringing to the area to enhance what it is that we have in Henry County. We're trying to move forward in the direction. I didn't see that today. I hope you all deny this. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. My name is Tina Coria, and I live at six sixty Chambers Road, McDonough, Georgia, three oh two five three for the last thirty-five years. And I also have a hundred-acre farm not far, just really around the corner from this piece of property. Couple of things that I want to share with you, and first of all, let me just say that I hope that you all will deny it, deny the comp amendment, because that is the Bible that we hold with you all. We've already had some things done to the land use plan for the future that we had not expected, and so again, I ask you to please deny this. And I also want to share with you a couple of things. One is, is that D.R. Horton builds with Tim Jones Properties, and I can tell you that they build crap. Their history, do your research, go to AI, whatever, but you will find that it does not leave a good-quality product behind. Besides that, this particular piece of property, there are many farms around that area, and this has been residential agriculture that I will tell you, I've been coming down here for, since the land use map, since nineteen ninety-two was my first one to come down here, or nineteen ninety. And we had purposely tried to, as homeowners, as invested members and citizens of the community, we've done everything in our power to make sure that we grow right. We had also wanted to be not just a suburban community, but we also wanted to be agricultural as well, because that's what our heritage is, and that's what gives people true ownership. We also had the best loans available in this area, which is farmers' loans, and that's based on density, and those are still available because we have not exaggerated that number yet. In addition to that, the farmers' home loans are zero down and zero, you know, in very low interest, and I can tell you that many folks here are under farmers' loan, and that property never had the opportunity to be listed as a farm for sale. I have experience with D.R. Horton as well, and D.R. Horton, they do clandestine agreements, all the developers do, and so they hit you up, and they hit us up, and lots of them did because they wanted to turn our farm into a development. We stood tight against them, and all my neighbors did, because they wanted to bring in sewer, and they scare you that, oh, if you don't do this, you're going to lose the value of your land for your kids and your future. But I'm leaving my legacy behind for my children and for Henry County in conservation for this to be used, because I have forty acres of wetlands. This is part of the, this particular area is part of the watershed, is part of wetlands, and here's the thing that D.R. Horton does, which they did to us, after we kept saying no, they still showed up on my hunter cameras that we, because we still hunt our property, and they still showed up on my camera, D.R. Horton folks, with a machete going down my creeks, because I have like five different creeks that cross each other on our property as well. And, you know, we captured that, and D.R. Horton apologized, but I can tell you that they don't operate in an ethical manner, and on top of that, you have Mount Carmel Elementary, where all my kids went to school, that and Lee Street Elementary. You have Mount Carmel, you have Llewellyn Middle, and you have Llewellyn High School, which are all the school districts for that. Those schools are part of the twenty-seven Felling Schools that's on the Felling School list. We've got to start thinking about that. Public education is huge, and when we oversaturate these schools and we don't care about them and help them to thrive, you know, it's going to be a nightmare. On top of that situation, not only do you just have the school, but the way that the clandestine agreements do, as you all know, planning and zoning denied this. Why do we have a planning and zoning if we do not adhere to what their recommendations are? Planning and zoning denied this, and one of the things I want to share with you all is, is that if this is denied tonight, there's a farmer that already wants to put a contract on it and buy it and never develop it, keep it as farmland, agricultural. You go through the Ag South or the Ag Land Components, and you're able to actually sell your property as farmland. There's, you know, several situations that we could share with you all, but the main thing is to remember that when you look at a plate of bacon and eggs, what's going to happen? You're going to look at it, and you're going to think two things. One is, for the chicken, that's a day's work. For the pig, that's a lifetime commitment. So when you have the developers come up here, that's a day's work for them and what they're trying to do, but for our communities, that's a lifetime commitment, that's a commitment to our schools, that's a commitment to our infrastructure. We've already gotten saturated with apartments, and we do want to retain what brought us all to Henry County, which is our wonderful way of having rural agriculture as part of what we do as well. And there is a buyer that will buy this farm, but under the agreements with, you know, these clandestine agreements, it has to be denied by planning and zoning, and it has to be denied by the Board of Commissioners before they will let the home, the landowner out of the contract. So we're counting on you all tonight to please deny both the comp amendment, and I'm begging you, on behalf of Conserv Henry, to please deny the additional. And you just listen to all, I mean, they're just trying to push something down your throat. So again, thank you, and I really appreciate your consideration.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Ward. I live at seven seven one Peninsula Overlook in Hampton. The request to utilize the property in a manner inconsistent with the current zoning designation was reviewed by the zoning board. The board denied the request. I am in full agreement with the board on the decision that they made. The integrity of the residential zonings must be maintained, and the character of the neighborhood must be maintained, and I do not feel that they will bring in, based on what I saw, the character of the homes that they are bringing in are not consistent with what's already there. Some of the common complaints that comes up with D.R. Horton is quality issues. They report cheap and low-grade material, uneven floors, improper installations, leak, grading problems in yard, and poor finishes, and we hear and see that all the time. The warranty and customer service problems, delayed in addressing issues. I know some people who had to wait years and it never, their complaints never got rectified. Also transparency, hidden costs, some buyers say contracts have confusing terms, and sometimes issues discovered after purchases, like fees that are non-refundable, down payments, escrow, et cetera, and the variability of, by locations and local builders. The experience that people have with D.R. Horton has been across the nation lousy, and I feel that in the area, we have quality build in the area, and we need to keep that consistent with what's in the area. So I hope that you guys would deny the request. Thank you.
Right, we've got seventeen seconds for those, anyone that can, wants to come in opposition, you have seventeen seconds to state your case. If not, then we will, I will turn it over to you.
Chair, if I could interrupt. We need ten more minutes for each side.
Oh, ten, ten more minutes.
And they've already presented, so if you want to start the clock over at ten minutes and have Ms. Battle come forward and then do the opposition.
Okay, all right.
I would like to reply-
Can you start the clock over then? You going to start the clock over? Okay, thank you.
So I would like to reply to some of the comments that were made by the community. You can't be the largest home builder in America at over eighty-nine thousand lots sold without having some challenges. We certainly know that there are going to always be folks who have challenges when it comes into home building. It is not things that come off of kind of a cookie-cutter moment. It is something that you have individual homes that are being built, and there can be challenges along that path. I cannot talk to specifics with regards to their customer service and things of that nature, but we are certainly willing to sit down with the Commission and provide whatever information is necessary to give confidence in the work that D.R. Horton does and that the folks that they have been providing quality homes for, for years. What we know, however, is that this is a zoning hearing that is trying to deal with whether or not it is appropriate, one, for the comprehensive plan to be amended, to allow for this project to be able to move forward in a manner that is consistent with, quite honestly, the infrastructure in the area. We know that while the property right now has a land use designation of medium-density, which allows up to four units per acre, this project and any project on this property right now does not have access to public sewer, so therefore, we are put in a position where we really have no choice but to ask for the comprehensive plan to be amended. We cannot say that the current landowner, even if the young lady that spoke before in opposition indicated that there is someone waiting in the wings to buy, that doesn't mean that there is a willing buyer and a willing seller at a willing price. It just means that somebody else wants to attempt to buy the property. And to my knowledge, there is no current backup contract on this property. The landowner has been very clear that they are committed to this process, that they want to see the property sold, that they want to be able to sell to D.R. Horton. They have been in this dance and this relationship for a couple of years now. If there was a time to get out, they could have done that, but they have not, and so they continue along this path in hopes that we will be able to come to some resolution with the county in terms of being able to move forward. We also know that with regards to the overall site plan, if there are modifications, we are not opposed to putting in amenity areas on the site. It was our understanding that those were not being required in this moment, but if that is the desire of this board, we have no problem adding some amenities into the overall site plan for the site. We are very committed to having a quality product. We see the changes that are occurring within this county, and we ask for that moment. I was not working on this at the beginning of the process. I was hired kind of in the middle, and we thought that we were moving in the direction that allowed for the project to continue to move forward, but if there are additional changes that are needed and are necessary, we are here to work with the county. We did receive a recommendation of approval by staff, and while we did receive a recommendation of denial by the Planning Commission, it should be noted that the District Five Commissioner actually did, I believe, in this one, I'm going to retract that because I think I was thinking of another one, but the bottom line is, what we do believe is that we have the opportunity to try and work with this board. D.R. Horton wants to be a part of this community. They've done other projects in Henry County that have been very successful, some that we'll be talking about next month with the gates at Pace Creek, and so we are very excited still about the opportunity to work within Henry County and would like, again, the opportunity to continue to have discussions with the District Five Commissioner and with the rest of the board to see if we can come to some product type, and I think that that has been the biggest issue, is the product type that would be on the site, along with the tweaks that we can make to the site plan to add any type of amenity areas that you all might be interested in doing. So if there are any further questions for us, we are happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you. Reset, anyone wishing to come speak in favor, opposition? So we're going to close the public hearing, and I'll turn it over. Okay, come on, Ms. Tina, come ahead.
Thank you. Tina Coria, six sixty Chambers Road, McDonough, Georgia, three oh two five three, and I do want to state and clarify what Ms. Battle said, and that is that the, the person that wants to buy it, the farmer, he actually knows what D.R. Horton's paying for it, and he is going to pay exactly what they had offered if this is denied. And again, I just ask you to please deny it.
Good evening. Lisa Ward, seven seven one Peninsula Overlook. Just restating something that the young lady said, that D.R. Horton is one of the biggest builders in the nation. There was a saying that was called too big to fail at one point. Sometimes I think you fail because you're too big, and I think in this case, D.R. Horton is failing homeowners, communities, cities, because they're too big, and the product that they're building is failing. It's failing in, by way of plumbing, roofing, grading, just a litany of things that they're failing in. Some of the core problems that have been reported is rushed construction timeline. They rush construction. As she said, that they are building another subdivision. They're building too many subdivisions at one time. So when you're building a lot of subdivisions at one time all over the nation, the quality of the people that are coming in, your subcontractors, usually are the ones that do not meet, meet the standards that they should meet, because you're bringing in too many people that are not qualified to put in a good product, and that's one of the things that they are doing. You also have inconsistent quality control, surface-level finishes that mask much deeper issues. The bottom line is, D.R. Horton is failing Henry County and other counties in this nation because they're too big and they're not building quality material. So I still say, let's deny this product, this project, and let's bring somebody in that's going to bring some character to our neighborhood and to Henry County. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Connie Snow and I live at 426 Chase Marion Way and I'm with Conserv. Henry. If there is a chance that this land can stay rural and keep some kind of ruralness to our county that we're losing at a rapid pace due to the overdevelopment, I really think you should take that into consideration. By not approving this, you're gonna give us more time to allow their infrastructure to catch up. It's no secret that our infrastructure is outdated and I get it, you guys are trying to fix it, but that's years down the road. So I urge you to please do not approve this. Additionally, I do believe that school letter's outdated. It's from twenty twenty-three. I would say at a minimum, if you are even contemplating approving this, that developer should go back through the channels with the Water Authority, because that letter was outdated too, and the School Board to get updated records. Because our schools are failing, we don't need to cram more people in it till we can get ahold of it and that infrastructure as well. And we do have some storm water issues in our county. I'm currently a victim of that and so is my whole neighborhood. You all know that I have a sinkhole by my house now due to a collapsed storm drain. And then we had flooding in our neighborhood and several other issues that were a result of developments that are attaching into our outdated storm water system. So it's no secret that that's happening to me now. And if it's happening in my neighborhood, there's gotta be other places in Henry County. So I urge you again to deny it. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna close public hearing and Commissioner Lewis, this is in your district.
Yes.
Kent, Taylor. I'm not sure who.
I'd like first, thank you, thank all of our residents for coming up to speak and also Attorney Battle for presenting the case. I'll actually yield to my colleagues first before I say what I have to say.
Okay. Johnny, the chief.
Oh, have you come in?
I just have one question. I'm assuming this is the old tree farm, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Price?
I just want to say, the development itself was problematic for me. I feel that as elected officials, we have the responsibility to make sure that we build communities. And the problem I had was when I looked at the development, that there were absolutely no amenities. And I'm real big on amenities, green space, and I think that that should not be an afterthought to get an approval or get something approved. It should be a forethought, that it should be planned and implemented into every development and not just as quote unquote "condition of approval." And so again, I think as we are bringing developers in or as they are coming in, you know, they have to be community minded and oriented to make sure that they are leaving communities so that we as residents can enjoy the place that we love.
I got a question. You said it was denied in planning and zoning?
Yes, the zoning advisory board denied both the comp plan and the rezoning on March tenth.
What was their reasoning?
I don't think they wanted to change the comprehensive plan and they just voted denial based off of the presentation that was given in the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll try not to be on my soapbox, I know we have other items tonight, but there are a few things that were very problematic for me with this development. At first, when I first heard about it, I was excited because the lot sizes are very good, so we usually don't get proposals for lot sizes that are almost an acre within District Five, so I was, I was actually kinda excited about the lot sizes. What has given me a lot of pause and, and try not to be angry about it is, is that we keep on getting developers coming to the county and tell us what they're not gonna do. You know, I think we as a, we as a collective board have said that we're gonna elevate what we want for Henry County. I think every single person up here has stated that we want to, to do better and that we want better for Henry County. And I guess what really got to me was maybe about a month and a half ago, the Assistant Director of Planning, because I was frustrated, because I'm like, you know, these elevations, they don't, they don't look like anything. It's like, we keep on telling them what we want and they don't, they don't bring us new elevations. And there was an email that was sent to D.R. Horton over a year ago and it said exactly what we want. It literally told about the other neighborhoods that are along Mount Carmel Road, North Mount Carmel Road, Crystal Lake. This is an area of premier homes and nice community oriented neighborhoods. And so it's disheartening to, to feel that what you ask for falls on deaf ears. Ms. Ward said something that, you know, kinda resonated with me, talking about, you know, how big the company is. And sometimes I think companies get so big that they don't listen to the individual communities that they serve. And so some, I feel like that is, that is the case here. We've been trying to tell, and I say we, all the board members have been trying to tell D.R. Horton, I know specifically in the last couple of years, what we want in this county, and it seems like D.R. Horton doesn't wanna listen. So I don't really like to pick on a company per se, but if the shoe fits. So to Commissioner Price's point, to even propose a community with no amenities, you know, what are, what are our, our neighbors supposed to do? What are, what are the homeowners supposed to do? I know we do have North Mount Carmel Rec Center, which is not too far away, but people should be able to enjoy their own neighborhood and go out. I mean, we have two lakes right here. It would have been very easy just to design some stuff around a lake for, for the homeowners to do. That didn't happen. And I guess what really is like the final straw is, every time a developer comes to me, I really, I go through and I look at their portfolio to see what they build. And I look at what you build in other places of the country and it looks way better than what you build in Georgia. And I'm not just talking about just Henry County, I'm talking about all over Georgia. I look at community after community in Georgia and then we get the same type of stuff, but when you go to other states, Southwest, Midwest, you know, there are better products there. So to me, until you decide to do what we ask, I don't, I don't think we have any choice but to say that Henry County is not going to, to do business like that. So, so with that, I'd like to make two motions. I know we have to vote individuals, but I'd like to make a motion to, or move to deny the comp plan amendment.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so I got a, got a motion and a second to deny the comp plan, all in favor.
And then I'd also move to deny the rezoning for this property as well.
Second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion carried. Next item, RZ-24-26.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members and Pillars of the Community. The items I'll pre-presenting tonight is RZ-2426 and they are related to the property located just south of Luella Road. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 208.7 acres from RA Residential Agricultural to R2 Sewer, Single Family Residence, for the purpose of developing a single family subdivision. Here we have the aerial view of the property. This is also in your exhibit books and on the screen. The current zoning of the property is RA Residential Agricultural. The property is designated for our future land use map as low density suburban, which supports up to two units per acre. Next is the boundary survey, which outlines the full extent of the property, just over 208 acres. Here is the yield plan, which is required before proposing a conservation layout. This shows the maximum number of lots using conventional subdivision design. In this case, the yield plan shows 275 acres with a net density of 1.75. Now here's the proposed site plan for the conservation subdivision. This plan preserves 58% of the site as open space, well above the required 40%. It also includes a landscape buffer protecting the area's natural features and enhancing the community's overall appearance. The proposed plan has 234 residential lots with a minimum lot size of 10,890 square feet, which meets the standard for this development. Please see the elevations provided by the applicant. This subdivision does introduce two different housing types. One portion will be age restricted adult, active adult community for residents 55 and older, and the rest will be single family detached homes. The proposed development consists of 234 lots. They are preserving 58% of the preservation, which means that there have a lot of green space located on the property. And the proposed conservation subdivision is within the limited development area requiring a minimum lot size of 10,890. Again, the applicant is requesting to rezone from RA Residential Agricultural to R2 on 208.7 acres and the future land use map designation is low density. Here are comments that we've received from numerous departments regarding water and sewer, schools, as well as public safety. This will require one additional fire staff member as a result of the residential units for the development. On April 10th, the zoning advisory board approved the rezoning request from RA Residential Agricultural to R2 Single Family Residence Sewer with the following conditions. And I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have this evening.
We'll hold questions until after the public hearing. This is a public hearing. Those wishing to come to speak in favor of this project, please come forward.
Thank you, Taylor. Madam Chair, Madam Chair, Members of the Board of Commissioners, my name is Andy Welch. I'm at 2200 Keesbury Court, McDonough, Georgia. I'm here to present this on behalf of the Nut Family and on behalf of Pulte Homes. Taylor, thank you very much. The staff has done a thorough job, which is not surprising because the, the staff has recommended approval for this particular subdivision layout and also for the zoning advisory board also voted unanimously to approve, recommend approval for this particular subdivision. Taylor has shown you the yield plan on the proposed layout if you did a conventional R2 subdivision on the property. And that's the method of calculation for a conservation subdivision. In the layout that we have before you tonight for approval, we have gone to, we've done a town hall meeting where we've met with the public to hear their input on the proposed plan. We've reviewed the cemetery studies that we have had to do for this project. The commissioners asked for that to be fully done and vetted. We've done that for this project and we've identified that area that's a cemetery and we've isolated that and retained access for that particular area. You'll see in the, backing up real quick if I could, you'll see that the amount of open space that we're preserving flows into the Talaga Reservoir of Henry County. So we are preserving a tremendous amount of acreage in, in forest land to preserve that and protect the water supply to our county. There is a nature trail that will be built in that area, but other than that, it will remain undisturbed. In addition, we've, and that's what the conservation subdivision model allows for you to do. In addition, we are preserving some of the other natural features of the property, including an existing lake. We have adding amenities to this, to the product and, let me back up and say, we're also improving Luella Road all the way down to this farm, so the public dirt road there will now be paved and improved so that it will be on a paved road all the way down with a cul-de-sac at the end. We are building amenities for this particular project and we're integrating the natural features, as I mentioned, about the nature trail and the wooded area. Around the lake, at the bottom of your screen, there is a pavilion and some parking area there so that people can come and access and fish at the lake, so you're utilizing the, the natural amenity for a public purpose throughout the subdivision. In addition, you'll notice that we have a pickleball courts, swimming pool and clubhouse and parking for the entire subdivision at the opening of the boulevard entrance. We have two entrances off of what will be the paved and improved Luella Road and that's paved and improved not at the taxpayers' expense, but at the developers' expense. And then also, we have emergency access points that are, that exist at the bottom connecting what is the yellow area, which are the senior homes, and this is for 55 and up community, and then the conventional family homes, which are the lighter yellow homes on the layout. Again, it's a request from RA to R2 Conservation. You'll see that the total site area, of course, is 100 and, is 208 acres. The lot mix is gonna be 239, which is about 50 lots less than what could otherwise be built there. We have 151 single family homes, 188, sorry, 88 age restricted homes, meaning 55 and older. These are with a 50-foot buffer around the entire perimeter of the, of the property and including the adjacent property lines. And when you look at the aerial, you'll see that there, that this is farmland, so most everywhere we're building and developing the property is existing farmland that's under agricultural use. Around the perimeters, however, there are trees and, and that's typical for a farm to have the boundaries, hedgerows and trees. Those will be preserved by this required 50-foot buffer. And they remain undisturbed. The gross density is gonna be 1.15, the net density is 1.26, well below the, your incompl- incomplete, your comprehensive plan for low density development in this area. Again, the open space is 40% is required. We have 51%, staff has 58%. It's a method of how you calculate it. We've erred on the side of going, showing lower because we have the lake, we have the roadways that have been built into it. Nevertheless, it exceeds the open space requirements for conservation subdivisions significantly, so we're not just cutting the edge like, oh, well, we'll just give 40%. We're actually going in excess of that because of the nature of the layout of the property and I think the better utility of the screen space, integrating that green space into the subdivision. So I'll go back and just show you that site plan. Notice how the green space is integrated into each pod. It's not like they're concentrated and forced into one spot, but you have areas where there's going to be trees and forests in the perimeter, within the internal of the subdivision. So I don't know if you can see it based on the, the laser won't show on there, I guess. But you can see that the, that the tree wooded areas that will grow up in this subdivision are, are integrated within the subdivision itself and not all in one side or one location. Housing products for our age restricted home plans are gonna be single story plans with, with level entry for them. In talking with the commissioner, we, the staff integrated in requirements that were more for handicap related or older related infrastructure with inside the, the home. Staff has a condition, I believe it's condition five, that integrates those requirements. Yes, for the active adult pod, there's gonna be exterior lighting. The exterior doors will have artificial lighting sources to make sure that it, highly visible- The exterior doors will have artificial lighting sources to make sure that it's highly visible for older people to get into their homes easier. Lighting controls in the dwelling, 36-inch fully accessible route through the floor plan, complete living areas to, that is, that has access to the kitchen and master bathroom in terms of a level floor plan. There will be level handle, level handles inside the interiors to make it easier to open and close doors. The walls are reinforced for blocking to allow for handicap railings within the showers. And the wall-mounted electrical units are offset in terms of colors, so they're easy to distinguish and easy to see for a senior, for a senior living community. In our, in our nut farm, the non-age-restricted homes will have a mixture of facades, taking on some of the farm quality that's in that rural area. But you see the diversity of use with brick and stone and hardy plank mixtures on these, on these homes. These are another set of series that Pulte Homes builds. And a little more, more, I would say kind of 1990s, early 2000s design, less of the farm-style homes that I showed you before. All of these homes that you're seeing are different home types that people can choose from, from Pulte to build on, in the subdivision. So they have a large palette that the individual homeowners can choose from and build on. Staff has recommended approval, the zoning advisory board has recommended approval unanimously, if I remember correctly. And then we've also submitted our constitutional rights letter, and we ask that you join in that approval and vote to approve this project for the nut farm, and I think for the betterment of the community and for the development of that roadway down to the, to the end of Luella Road. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them at the appropriate time, Madam Chair, members of the commission.
Stephanie, stop. Is the Nut family here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone want to come and say a few words?
You know, I'm short, sorry about that. Good evening. Thank you for having us and allowing us to speak before you. My name is Pam Nutt. I have been on our local school board now for 28, 30 years, and today is my birthday, and I can't think of a better birthday present than for y'all, please approve. I approve this. I mean, what more can I say? I'm spending my birthday with you guys. I would like to tell you that the Nut family has looked at this proposal from Pulte Homes. We've looked really hard to, we want the best for our community because we still live here. I'll still be here with you guys for at least three more years on the school board, and maybe even longer, I don't know. But we care about this community. We've been here. John and his family grew the crops and everything, and he, his family has been established. His mother was a counselor at Henry County High School. So we're still very vested. We're not going to sell our farm and move away. We'll be here. And I would like to say one other thing. I know my time went out. The school system appreciates Pulte Homes because they're a very big supporter of our schools. If you'll notice, we, they have banners on some of our school fencing, and they, they're big supporters. I don't know why, but I kind of feel like people call and ask for school assistance. But they, they're very good, they're not like some of the other builders. They'll listen to you, and you can make them do right. But we're very proud. The Nut, the Nuts are very proud of this proposal and how it's laid out. And I think it's much, it's different than some of the other subdivisions. And for Mr. Welch, it's not seniors, we're seasoned adults. So I just wanted to let him know. But it is very nice. So I do hope you will consider it and give me the best birthday present ever.
Thank you, Ms. Nutt. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this project? Please come forward.
My name's Ann Fields, 329 Chase Marion Way, 30253. Looks like it's going to be nice to get a house at the Nut House, right? The only question I have, I feel that the conservation, this is kind of a for and against, right? We're looking to control our traffic, you know, keep, keep things looking as rural as we can with homes that are spaced out and have pleasant appearances to them. And the conservation development meets a lot of that, and I feel that that's a real positive step, that we're seeing a lot more of these being offered to Henry County. I did notice on that last slide of the exemptions that were put in place from the zoning board that there was a reference to 5 and 10%. But Kevin, you had said you wanted to keep rentals capped at 5% for the county across the board. Can we take a look at that last slide again in case it needs an amendment before you would vote? And I do want to say thank you very much for entertaining the conservation developments. One thing to keep in mind, and we see this with my backyard, the, the trees that were drawn into this development that were in the center island between the senior living and the all-ages living, were those trees, is this going to be a complete flattening and leveling of all of the land so they can develop it and put the trees back? Or are they planning on trying to leave existing trees in place because you saw how bad the root damage is when they start? You saw that firsthand. There's no real salvaging these trees when you get to a dig-in. So that's a big concern of mine when we're looking at these. So as, if I can't always attend a meeting, just remember my tree roots and my dying trees in my yard. I thank you for, for taking all of this into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. My name's Jean Kessinger, 323 Rocky Creek Road, Hampton. This is a for and against. When we started developing conservation subdivisions or gated communities, everybody said, well, we want amenities. But when, the word conservation in and of itself means to leave it alone. You conserve it. Putting a nature trail in a conservation is, it's a park. It's not a, there's nothing, you're letting the trees grow and maybe some wild animals that would probably scare any individual from the city, have them running right out of the trees with, like their hair is on fire. So being, being as that is an object of contention with some people who know what a conservation area is. Elimination of trails is a good idea. Rentals in a conservation area, really? That shouldn't be. We're trying to conserve something. We do not want transients there. I know that says, you know, like we're being selective, but we are. We're conserving. We're saying yes to this and no to that. Just, we, we do a lot of investigating on the developers, and I just have one simple question of all of the board members. Do any one of you know the difference between sheetrock and drywall? I'm going to give you a very simple answer. It's cost and strength. So when you have developers telling you about these exquisite places for $400, $750,000, they're cutting their cost by putting the cheapest material in there. You and I can't tell the difference between drywall and sheetrock, but trust me, a tornado can. It can also tell the difference between a 2x4 and a 1 3/4 x 3 1/2. And according to some building codes and stipulations, a 1x4 and a 2x4 is the same thing unless it's specified. So quality does matter. The little tiki-tack boxes that developers are pushing, they're not what we want for quality for our people. We want, we want homes that are going to withstand storms, that are going to look good, give the homeowner pride and the community pride. But we also want to use a mode of common sense when we start dealing with certain things like conservation subdivisions. I so appreciate your time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melanie Chandler. I live at 270 Nut Drive in Locust Grove. I'm not for, but I'm not against. The only concern that I have is I live on the corner of Nut and Hunter Road. They are talking about abandoning Hunter Road. My mother lives, only house on Hunter Road. She lives at the end of that road. I will no longer, after 30-plus years, have access to my 79-year-old mother unless I go up 155 all the way around the universe to get to her. And she calls me on a daily basis for one thing or another. So I'm not against this, but I would still like to have access to take care of my mother. And that's all I really have to say.
Okay, so a public hearing is closed. I do have a couple of questions myself. Can you address the, the trails, I guess, development around the, I mean, because you, you said in the presentation, I thought I saw where you're preserving what percentage of?
Staff has it at 58%. We have it at 51%, just difference in the calculations, but it exceeds the.
You're preserving 51% of the 208 acre?
Yes.
Okay. 51% is reserved for. And then the trail that is going around, how is that going to impact the area that's being conserved is my first question.
Yes, Madam Chair, we, we have it in there as an amenity so that, that people can access and enjoy walking through the, the conserved land. In discussions with the Commissioner for the District and staff, there was a desire to have some utility to this area. And so the walking trail is a minimal impact utility, but it does allow for individuals that do want to walk and exercise and, but also want to commune with nature to have that opportunity. I dare say, though, that if you're going to walk on this trail, you're going to encounter deer, and you're going to encounter wildlife. And that's the beauty of this particular layout and this subdivision and this location because this area is still relatively wild. And so, you know, our preference is to, to obviously have this as an amenity, and we think that's innate, that it's consistent with the conservation subdivision in the sense of trying to preserve nature, but also provide an ability to interact with it in a very minimal way. But that, that's your discretion, but that's, we planned it that way for that intention.
Okay, all right. And then the, my, my second question is about the trees. Is there, is not going to be a bunch of clearcutting, is it?
No, Madam Chair, not at all. If I may, let me, I'm thinking, I don't know if we can do a visual, is that a way to show that?
We can.
Okay, yeah. Well, that's good. Hey, you're on candid camera.
Okay. Okay, there we go.
There we go. All right. Try to get it north and south, Madam Chair. But the question was asked about the, the nature. This, this is the current, pretty current view of what it is. It's farmland. This is agricultural land. This is where the subdivision will be located. This is being conserved in the natural state. It has a buffer already around the areas which we've preserved, is a 50-foot buffer. Staff, as conditions require, we cannot clearcut it. So the area that, that Ms. Fields was talking about, when she was talking about flattening or clearcutting the area, the area is already farmland, so it's already raw, flat land now, which makes this perfect for the layout that you saw. So this is minimal disturbance and minimal impact on the existing vegetation, the layout that we've presented to you tonight. And so what's going, what is going to have to happen is that there is going to be a plant, there's going to have to be trees that grow up between those areas of the lots that we showed you on the site plan. But that's going to allow for reforestation, which provides more habitat and more buffers between the backyards of these homes. So I think that we are truly building something that's inconsistent, very much consistent and even over the top, if you will, when you're talking about conserving the nature. So the buffers will not be, the commissioner was very adamant about not clearcutting the buffer lines to, to keep that vegetation in place so that it would not impact the neighboring properties, and that's required by that 50%, 50-foot buffer around the property.
Okay, and then my last question is going to be with regards to, where is that? Go back to, to the picture that he's got up here on the thing. Okay. Talk to me about this Nut and Hunter Road here.
It's crazy.
Okay.
I'm sorry, bad joke. No, no, the, the request is, Melanie Chandler's request is, is, is obviously to maintain this access to her mother's property. And Mr. Rick Martin, who's here tonight from Pulte, has spoken with Melanie Chandler's mother about that access, and that access is, Hunter Road comes down, and I'll show you.
It comes down this way. It's going to be rerouted to go around the lane this way, come down here in cul-de-sac.
There will be access, and we're required by the conditions of the staff to have a knox box and still have access. So there's going to be a road at the end of that cul-de-sac that, that allows for access down Hunter Road to those residents that are there and to the, the property to the southwest. And furthermore, there's already a connection, if you will, it's a, it's a fire safety connection. It's the back of Heron Bay where Hunter Road goes back into the Heron Bay subdivision. So we're going to keep that open because that's for fire safety purposes. If they need to get back in there or come in the backside of, of Heron Bay, they'll be able to access that, that place. So the plan does not cut off access for anyone, but it, but it does not continue the pavement beyond the, the boundaries of the nut farm. So I hope that addresses Ms. Chandler's concerns, but in terms of, in terms of her route, her route may be altered slightly by having to go around and through the subdivision to go around and through the subdivision to get to that, to that point, that cul-de-sac. I think that answers your question, Madam Chair.
Right, so Chief, Chief Black?
Yes, ma'am.
So, so what is fire? I mean, I know you guys have to sign off on this, so.
Yes, ma'am. So the, the overall site, we do not have an issue with. We do, it does meet remoteness. The only comment we really had in the beginning was the nature trail portion, the larger section up at the top with the complete loop. I believe you were referring to your initial comments of the walking trail within the subdivision itself. Our initial comment was, when we, this was presented to us, was that we're going to ask for a separate proposal or submittal for that nature trail section because we need to make sure that it's designed properly because we may have challenges on the fire department side accessing that nature trail if somebody is injured. The fire code allows us to have that conversation because it could have a negative impact on the services that the fire department provides. So at the time that it's submitted, we'll enter into conversation with the developer about what it needs to look like, make it as safe as possible. And if there's some sort of small equipment or apparatus that we need in place as part of this development, we will have that conversation at that time. But we do request that it be submitted separate. And last I checked, it was not submitted. What he's referring to was the trails within the subdivision itself, correct?
No, no, I'm talking about the nature trail that you're talking about. In 16, the condition, it reflects exactly what the fire department has asked for. It says the developer shall submit a separate plan for the proposed nature trail to Henry County Fire and Rescue for review and approval. So you, exactly what you just said, the staff put into the conditions of zoning.
Okay, awesome. Commissioner Robinson, you have a question?
Can you go back to your picture?
The other picture.
The picture?
Yes.
So you initially stated for Hunter Road. Now, you, you had your pen and you just, to me, it looked like it was a short, shorter version if you're going to the right, which will be my left. So can you point out whether, when you said Hunter Road is going to?
Yes.
Be changed to? Because to me, what you're saying, you're saying that now they're going to have to go around, so I'm kind of confused because you were talking fast. So can you tell me how they're going to get, how is Hunter Road going to be altered?
I, I get paid by the minute, so I was trying to be quick for my client.
Well, you went too fast.
So, so can you, can you identify the house?
Yes, I want to see that because if that is a concern, because this is someone who's been there, they've invested in that. So I just want to make sure that we understand clearly.
I can't speak exactly to Ms. Chandler's mother's house exactly because I'm not 100% familiar with, with her house, but I think it's here.
Okay.
Yeah, and Hunter Road cul-de-sac will be right here.
And I have an overlay that we can show that to you, but go ahead.
John Palmer, Falcon Design, working on the concept plan for the project. If we can go back to the concept plan.
Okay.
And I, before we go back to that, I did want to say, it is this?
It is here.
We can't see it.
Okay, go back to the-
Okay.
Wait a minute, hold up. Okay, okay.
We're hitting it, we're hitting it.
Go and get that.
So her, her property, her house is about right here. She got here, so. Her house is right here. Right there's her house. Currently, the Nut, I mean, the Hunter Road, if I go back to this line here. Hunter Road is a dirt road and it comes up from five thousand pond and it's gravel and turns left. So that's how she gets to her mom's house currently. Is through here to that, that parcel there. And this plan here, just to kind of show you what would need to happen, and I've talked with Mr. Martin about this as well. Hunter Road is going to be dead-ended here. The gravel is going to stop because when we met with the community, they didn't want residents from this neighborhood coming on. This is a gravel road coming this direction. So there will be a fire, an emergency service gate here, a lot, that would prevent people from coming north on Hunter into the neighborhood and prevent people from the neighborhood coming south onto the gravel drive. But there is a big dislocation here. Pulte recommends, Pulte understands that.
Pulte also-
They want to be a good neighbor, so they would give her a gate key. So she would be the only one that could go through there. You could too.
They'd been? That was my other question because I'm like.
She would be the only one that could go through there and then she would just come through the neighborhood there. So it is slightly longer, but it's still very convenient. She doesn't have to go all the way up to 155, Luella Road, or come back down that direction.
So, so you're saying that you're going down there on the road or?
Hunter Road deadends right past, deadend right past her house. So people from the neighborhood won't be coming through. But you, your wife will have a key to the gate to allow her to get through to her mom's house when we notice that.
Okay, how will she get out from her house when she leaves her house?
Her house will be able to go-
Will she have to go through the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay, let me ask you this.
And I don't know, I don't want to get out of order either.
Hey, Madam Chair. We're not going to do that.
Y'all have a public hearing going on.
Sir, you need to have a seat, sir. You need to have a seat.
May I have a seat?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I show you one more time?
No, sir. Public, public hearing is over. No, sir.
And I guess what I just wanted to clarify is, Pulte will work with the family to make that happen.
Even at the town hall meetings, we had these very same discussions. So what we're telling you is the same thing we've told everyone at the town hall meeting, everyone at the planning and zoning commission meeting, and again now. These have been consistently throughout the process, and we've adjusted and redesigned to make sure that that access is there and that there is that opportunity. So people, she'll be able to come out of her house and drive up and through the subdivision and come out, or vice versa, as, as John just showed you. Ms. Ms. Fields asked about 5% or 10% on the, on the slides, and the staff recommendation was a 5% cap on the amount of rental that could occur. People do rent homes as a result of having to move. There may be something that happens in the family circumstances where they are rented. This is not a rental community. It's never been proposed for one. That is not the model Pulte engages in at all. And so they're not, that's not going here. And so that condition is perfectly acceptable to us. I, I will be honest, I did ask for it to be 10% because that's a little bit more practical number to, to moderate. But the staff condition is 5. We don't have any problem with that condition. So I did want to address Ms. Fields's question. And then, with it being rental, this is, you know, I, I can't really comment on this idea of being selective. I mean, what we're doing is trying to be an open community to different age groups, families, and seasoned, not seniors, seasoned individuals that would like to live in this community and enjoy the benefits of that home design. And so, we, we think we're trying to be very open and, and useful to the public as a whole. And, and actually have a very diversified community with both, I mean, literally, a family could live in the family part of the subdivision, raise their children there, enjoy the amenities, the, the lake, go fishing, use the playgrounds, use the pool, go swimming. And grandmother and grandfather, the seasoned, wise members of their family, could live literally in the same subdivision within walking distance of the home and a safe and a home built and designed for that, their purpose, and still be able to enjoy the pickleball courts. I think it's a, it's a really good, it's going to be a very unique community going forward. And I'm, I'm pleased that we presented something that the folks that have spoken in opposition have said, well, I'm neither for nor against, I have some concerns and questions. That's highly unusual, but I think that that's a testament to the nature of the design, the positive ecological ability of this project to be, to be fulfilled. But I hope we've addressed some of the concerns and issues raised.
Commissioner Wilson, this is in your district.
So we've seen the 18 conditions. I have three more to add. Under spot six, there's a design for widening Hampton Locust Grove Road to four lane. And then the next T-spot would put in for the, for the build. In that Hampton Locust Grove, they'll have sidewalks on each side, landscaping and lighting. Those sidewalks will be connectivity to schools and the retail, and the retail corridor. So my first condition is for, for the developer, when they improve Luella Road, to add sidewalks, street trees, and, and lighting. The second condition is to, for the developer to give 210 Hunter Road, that's the resident they was talking about, access to Nut Drive. Create a driveway from 210 Hunter Road to Nut Drive. And my third condition is to take the, the senior living on the upper side and put it on the lower side, therefore, and move the standard subdivision over, let them have access to the walking trail. And those are my conditions. We don't need to vote on this tonight because I think there's going to have to be some design change. And you can bring that back next meeting for a vote.
We will not do that. I'm sorry, the bottom line is, we've designed this plan. You're wanting us to flip all of the, the light yellow lots with the gold yellow lots, is what I understood the last condition to mean. You're asking us to, to create a private drive for private property owners that are not affiliated with this subdivision. And that may be something that we could work on and, and discuss. And then you're wanting us to put sidewalks, street trees, and lights all down Luella Road and light that entire road as though it was a subdivision road. The sidewalks and street trees might be something we could talk about along Luella, but putting streetlights in that, installing the streetlights would be an extremely expensive endeavor as the utilities would have to run all the way up and down that for, with EMC or Georgia Power, and I would assume it'd be EMC. I think the main part of the problem with the conditions you're proposing, Commissioner, is that you're wanting to swap the entire development from gold-yellow to the light-yellow, if I heard you correctly. Did I hear that correctly? And, and I think the simple answer to that is that we cannot do that. Both of the layout of the property and the sewer layout of the property are not designed in order to accommodate that swap of the residential and the senior residential, or the seasoned residential.
I'm not asking you to change the layout. I'm asking you to take the houses to the right. And those, there's about the same number of houses. I'm not talking about the one in the center. Take the houses to the right for senior living and take the houses to the left for, combined with the rest of the subdivision. I'm not changing, not changing the design, just moving the senior living down. Don't change the design of the subdivision because it's the same amount of houses on the lower side than you have on the upper side.
Okay, so you-
There's no change to design it's going to require, other than you may have to add an additional gate, center ways to get over to the senior living.
Okay, I think so, maybe I misheard you then. Where it's, where, where there's an arrow that says single-family lots down at the bottom right corner on this, on the plan, the screen, Commissioner, is that where you're talking about moving senior housing?
So if you look at Lot 88 on the top corner here, all right, so everything that's to the right of that, which would be, that would be the northeast corner. So we're not changing the design at all. We're just asking for the senior living to be in the northeast and let the other part of the subdivision be. No design changes. I'm not requesting any design change, not in that part.
Okay, if I could just talk to the public, it's important to the public that it's also important that Pulte and the Nuts know what you're asking. This line here, is that a dividing line that you're talking about?
Yes.
This will be all, this, this area here to the left, if you will, of this line going through the lake and would all be family? And then this area down here would be the senior living?
Yes. I'm not asking for design change. Just asking to put the seniors down here, same number of houses, basically.
What does that do with your lot size?
It doesn't change our lot sizes. Madam Chair, it, it's just, it's just flipping the orientation of the, the houses we, these houses will be senior story in that, in that section. So that's a question I'd have to ask Pulte Homes because it is a, it is a different change in it. In the terms of the gating, just to be clear with the Commissioner, we, I'm assuming that at some point, they would have to be-
Gated right in there, absolutely.
In this area here?
Yes. Now, I don't know if the fire codes are going to allow you to take out this crossover road down middle ways, because in case you only have to let that one gate in. I'll let Chief Black answer that question.
Well, let me ask this because I, I, we have an entrance here.
Well, you could put your gate, you could put the gate off of that and not have, and you don't have to enter from up here around the amenities. Well, they would need access to the amenities, so yes. You'll have to put-
Gate here then.
And the gate to the amenities. Now, Chief Black, is that crossover road centered there? Is that, is that part of the fire code?
Potentially, yes, sir. What we're going to have to do is, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what you're trying to do is you're trying to have a gated, senior community within this subdivision because if you left the seniors adjacent to the nature trail and tried to gate it-
Yes.
Then the other half of the community won't have access to the amenities. So if you want a gated senior community, same number of houses, we would have to update the plans to show the gates. We'd have to make sure we apply the codes required for gates. But we'd also have to go back and make sure that we don't create any pinch points by doing that. There are with requirements for those gates. So it would have to be amended on the plans and we'd have to take a second look at it.
Okay. The, in discussing with Pulte Homes, we cannot accept those three conditions as I anticipated in the project. I think that that's, the, the swap of the units is actually changing the number of units that would be senior versus single-family detached, which changes the residential sales mix of the project. And they factor those things in when you're trying to design for constructing a public road and improving and paving a public road all the way down. So we, so when you, we start changing that mix and the numbers that are associated with that, then you are going to change the financial resilience of the project. And with that, that eliminates abilities to do other positive things that we would otherwise have done. And as far as the, I'd already discussed the, the lighting up and down Luella Road, that is extremely expensive. The, the access point, if you, if we do what you're saying to do, and I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the fire chief or fire inspector said, but if you do, if that is cut off- If this access is now going along the median between those two subdivisions, then you've made the route to get from Ms. Melanie's home to her mother's home even further. Because now that access has got, not there, you have to go, you'll have to go all the way up and around to the amenity area and back down. So that, that doesn't seem to further the interest of Ms. Chandler that spoke to us earlier.
So I'm trying to understand, maybe somebody help me understand why we need to swap it?
I don't know. We don't need to swap it. So to be clear, we are not advocating for that swap.
So the dark yellow is the 55 and older?
Yes.
And then the light, I guess, yellow is the single-family?
Yes. Which has been designed to give a focal point to that lake and to that, to the amenity areas for families and kids. Which has been designed to give a focal point to that lake and to that, to the amenity areas for families and kids. Um, and flipping that is going to flip the nature of those, the utility of those things and put people walking or driving further to get to the very amenities that are designed specifically for families. But, you know, but that, that's, that's the utility of the subdivision that you're changing. The, the functionality of it also changes in terms of the mix for which we are trying to build the subdivision. It changes the mix of senior versus, or seasoned versus family. And this is the first time we're hearing of this, by the way. This hasn't been presented at any of the town hall meetings. It hasn't been presented or discussed, uh, at the zoning advisory board meeting, which approved this plan unanimously. Madam Chair, we, we've submitted our constitutional rights letter, and including that, we've, we have, we are willing to stipulate to the eighteen conditions that staff has, has put forth in this plan. We expressly stated that any conditions over and beyond this, that, um, that impose additional cost on this project would, are, are, we would deem as unconstitutional, and we would challenge those in court. And we think that these certainly are.
Commissioner Ng?
Got one question, which shouldn't have to do with any of that. As far as the home plans that y'all provided, one stories look very nice. There's, does staff have, I guess, final decision, right? On this one, like on a lot of the other plans that we have, of what they're to look like? Because some of the two-story homes look really nice, but then there's a couple, in my opinion, that look a little outdated.
Yes, there is a condition that state's staff has architectural review over the elevations provided.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
And we, and I agree with you, because I, we looked at all of them, but, but at the same time, we wanted to show everything not, you know, you, people come in here and they'll show you what, the one thing they want to show you, is the one house, the three houses. And what I asked Pulte to do was to give me a broader brush of that. And that's not even the full scenario of homes. It's a much bigger and diversified portfolio than that. But we thought that those gave three different design styles, two of which I think are really applicable to this farming community area. That last slide I showed you with the, the brick, it looked more like the two thousands. It looked more like a, sort of a Lake Dow kind of feel than, than what I would think fits here.
I have a question. Uh, you mentioned that the homeowners will choose elevations during your presentation.
Yes.
So, will each home be built as they are purchased, or how will you?
Rick, do you want to, I think, I think the, he'll have a better explanation for how they, how they're doing the selection of homes.
Good evening, Madam and Vice Chair. I'm Rick Martin with Pulte Homes. I'm the Director of Land Acquisition. I live at, uh, three zero four T. Rose Court Group in Georgia. And I think I understood the question was, uh, how the house, how the sales process would work?
Yes.
We typically, uh, in most subdivisions, don't build a great deal of, uh, what we refer to as spec homes, where we build a house and then hope somebody buys it. We typically build the house and that is specified by the buyer in advance. Along with that concept, we have a monotony provision in all of our communities that won't allow, you know, and I'll just use some crude examples to demonstrate. Won't allow a white house to be across the street from another white house and so on. Two houses wouldn't have the same color bricks sitting next to one another. And what generally happens is you get a much more diverse-looking subdivision as a function of that effort. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You know, I, I think it's a great community.
Madam Chair? I'm going to make a motion to table to give them opportunity to meet and work out these changes, if that's, if that's what you want to do.
If it's going to result in the same three conditions, then we already know the answer. That won't change. We know the finances, we know the, the dynamics. Rick, do you, do you want to take?
We have a motion-
Hey, Madam Chair, there's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Yeah, Mr. Martin has said it clearly, this is, again, the first time we're hearing this. We're not going to do a redesign of this subdivision.
Madam Chair, I hate to apologize.
Sorry.
There's still a motion on the floor.
And I asked for a second.
But the public comment period has closed.
She's telling me to be quiet.
So, hearing no second, we need to call for another motion.
Okay, so is there another motion?
There, there has to be a motion to either table, approve, or deny.
I made a motion to table and it got denied, so... I yield to any board member that wants to make a motion either way.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Chair, can I get some clarity? Are you opposing?
I'm going to say this.
Thank you.
Next item is, uh, RZ dash twenty-four dash oh-three.
Good evening, Chair, Board Members, and Citizens of Henry County. Item before use of property located between Upper Wosley Road and Highway nineteen forty-one on Little Road. Uh, property is eighty point zero nine, plus or minus acres, and are currently zoned RA, residential agricultural. Uh, future land use map here is low-density mixed-use. Resoning request before use to rezone the property from RA to RS, residential suburban, for the purpose of a single-family and townhome development. Uh, this is the original site plan that was submitted by the applicant team, indicating a lot count of three hundred and twenty-five fee simple units with a density of five point zero three dwelling units per acre net. This is the updated site plan, showing a new lot count of two hundred and ninety-two fee simple units. Uh, proposed density is four point five eight dwelling units per acre net. So, they've, they've lost lots between the old site plan and the new. Um, here are some department comments that we received, um, as part of staff's evaluation. Uh, public safety here, I wanted to note that with the police department, according to those calculations provided by the police department, based on the number of dwelling units, that would be two additional officers. Uh, for the fire department, uh, applying a similar calculation to accommodate the number of units and residents anticipated with the development, uh, need an additional one point three fire staff members to maintain adequate service levels. Uh, here are some, uh, elevations that were submitted by the applicant team. Uh, the applicant, again, is requesting to rezone from RA to RS for the purpose of a single-family and townhome development. A portion of the property is within the boundaries of the highway corridor overlay district, and would need to comply with those standards. Uh, development would need to comply with the design standards for multifamily developments. Uh, the future land use map designation for this subject property calls for low-density mixed-use, supporting up to eight dwelling units per acre net. A newly proposed density for the development is four point five eight dwelling units per acre net, and would be supported by the future land use map designation. Uh, once again, the proposed lot count is two hundred and ninety-two fee simple units. That is a hundred and forty-two single-family units and a hundred and fifty townhome units. Uh, I do want to note that this site is located within the airport master plan area. Uh, the applicant team has had communications with our consultants on that plan. Uh, working drafts of the master plan do take into consideration and plan for this development. I thought that was important to note. Uh, on August eighth, twenty twenty-four, zoning advisory board did recommend approval of the applicant's request to rezone the subject property from RA to RS for the purpose of this development. Uh, conditions would include here, uh, amenities, uh, would, which would include putting green, resort pool, and cabana, uh, fifty-foot buffer where adjacent to the townhomes, twenty-foot landscape buffer adjacent to the single-family units, um, elevations to be approved and reviewed by planning staff, as well as a five percent rental cap with that. Uh, thank you, and be happy to take any questions.
Okay, we'll hold off on questions, but now this is a public hearing. Uh, anyone wishing to come and speak in favor of this development, please come forward.
Good evening, oops, good evening, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, thirty-five sixty-two, Havershamet, Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, three zero zero eight five. Um, we have been before this board a couple of times with regards to this particular project. Um, the last time we were before you, um, it was before the overlay district was put in place. And we know that, um, with the concerns that had been raised at that time, um, there was an interest in us going through, one, letting you all hire the consultant, um, with regards to the airport overlay, um, and for them to actually review our project. And since, uh, we last met, that is exactly what happened. Um, and we are extremely excited about the project and the improvements that have been made, um, through that process review. Um, as staff has already indicated, um, this property is in the low-density mixed-use, um, area, and we are seeking, um, the rezoning to allow for the development, um, as the project is shown. I'm going to kind of skip through, because I know staff has done a great job. As they indicated, um, when we initially started this project, we had over, um, three hundred and twenty-three, we had roughly three hundred and twenty-three units with a hundred and twenty-five single-family units, um, detached and, um, a hundred and ninety-eight townhome units. Since that time, um, this is the original site plan that was shown. Um, and we had a number of comments that came as a result, um, of our, um, review through Cooper Carey, the consultant with the airport, um, district. And, um, these were the original homes. And we know that we also got some feedback from, uh, Commissioner, um, Lewis with regards to those homes. And we worked really hard to come back with a product and with a site plan that more accurately reflects the vision and the direction that the county is moving in. And so that is why we are now looking at the site plan that you see before you today. Um, one of the things that we would like to highlight about this plan is that we have now increased the total number, um, of the residential units, um, while decreasing the total number of townhome units, and an overall decrease in the density on the project. So, we now have a hundred and sixty-six, uh, units, um, being single-family detached. Um, those units, um, in terms of the size of the units that will be on the lot, um, the homes that will be on the lot range from eighteen hundred to, um, three thousand square feet in size. And on the townhomes, we now have, uh, a hundred and twenty-six lots. Um, and those will range between sixteen hundred to eighteen, um, eighty square feet. Um, some of the other things that we would like to highlight would be, um, the amenity area. They are extremely proud, Dreamfinders is extremely proud of the amenity area that they have placed on this site. They have always intended for amenities, um, but they have actually accelerated some of those. Um, so what you're seeing here is kind of the area where we would have the pool and the cabana. Uh, but one of the things they also added was a putting green, um, that's added right behind. And that's not reflected on this plan, but that's one of the things that we added, um, into the project. Additionally, we've got a dog park, but we also have a butterfly garden. Um, and that was another, um, addition that was made since the, um, um, other, um, site plan that was provided. And we also have a blueberry bushes area, um, with edible, uh, landscaping. And so we're extremely, um, excited about those two additions onto the site plan, along with the putting green um, and the, um, other amenity area with the pool and the cabana in the clubhouse, excuse me. Um, also, uh, we have the update in the elevations. And I think you can see from what we have now into what we originally started, that it really brightens up the project, gives a much more contemporary, um, but also respectful, um, look, um, with more of a cottage, uh, sorry, more of, um, uh, an up-to-date kind of look, but also still holding into more of a farm, um, feature. And so, um, those are the elevations that staff has already presented to you. So, more of a farmhouse look. And we also wanted to just give a better sense of what some of the interiors will be on the site. And so with that, um, we respectfully request, um, approval of the application based on the conditions, um, put forth by staff. Again, we wanted to really highlight the fact that we have now flipped, um, in terms of the number of units, not only lowering that number, but we also have now, again, more single-family detached units than we do have townhome units, which we think also adds, um, to, um, the overall, um, community. And, uh, we've got sidewalks, along with maintaining all the buffers around the perimeter, um, of the site, um, and providing the additional green space, um, along as you're coming down Highway nineteen forty-one, which you'll see primarily is still green space along that, um, part of the corridor, um, with our primary entrance being off of Little Road and secondarily off of Upper Wosley Road. So, um, with that, we are here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to come and speak in support of this project?
Anne Fields, uh, three two nine Chase Marion Way, McDonough, three oh two five three. I am in support of the homes, not so much the townhomes, but I wanted to commend the developers for putting in the blueberry garden, the butterfly garden, and a nice improved dog park. I think those are amenities that everybody that's going to live here would appreciate. And I think that we can all agree that we'd like to see more of those in our developments. Um, I grabbed them on the way in tonight, um, asking for, uh, community gardens, too, as we saw they're doing now in other developments in other states. Um, the concern being HOA maintenance, of course. And if those things are just going to become overgrown and so forth. So, if we could consider asking for, um, continued maintenance of these things, whether the HOA decides to take it up or not, these would be amenities that the future residents would appreciate to see maintained. So, something a little more firmer around maintenance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support of the project?
Good evening. My name is Richard Little. I live on 883 Upper Woolsey Road. I'm one of the landowners that own the land, trying to get approved tonight. I have 43 acres located on Upper Woolsey Road, Little Road, and Highway 1941. I've got a sister-in-law, Donna Little, she lives behind me. Her husband, my brother, passed away about 20 years ago. She owns about a little over 20 acres. She's, her property is on Little Road and Highway 1941. And the remaining acreage belongs to my older brother, Jimmy, and his wife, which they've since passed, and they had four children. And theirs has about 15 acres, and it's on Little Road and Highway 1941. My father was born on this property in 1904. I don't know exactly when his parents acquired the property, but I would guesstimate he's been in the family for like 140 or 50 years. The first contract we signed on this property was in January of 2023, and here it is September of 2025. My mother and father had eight children, seven boys and one girl. My sister, she was a baby. She'll turn 75 next month. My oldest brother turned 97 this year. I've lost four brothers over the last 25 years to different illnesses, but there's four of us left. And actually, it was eight of us in the family, seven boys, and six of them brothers and ourselves. We served in every branch of the service in the United States. We didn't plan it that way, it just happened. My oldest brother was in the Marines. He was in the Korean War and got wounded in the Korean War. One joined the Navy, had one in the Coast Guard, two in the Air Force, and two in the Army. Out of the eight children, I was the only one that had interest in the farming contingent. Six of my brothers, they joined the service, and I told my dad I would wait until I was drafted, where I would just spent two years in instead of four. I graduated high school, graduated in 1962, and was drafted in the Army in 1965. The Vietnam War started in 1965, so as soon as I got through training, I was sent straight to Vietnam. I was in the first infantry division over there, big red one, for one year. I lost several buddies, and the ones that didn't die, some of them lost an arm and a leg, or both arms and both legs. It was a terrible war. I was lucky, I returned, both my arms and both my legs, and I had seven months left in service, so they sent me to Albuquerque, New Mexico. And that's where I met my wife to be, she was going to college out there. We dated. And I got out of the Army in September of 1967, and we got married in 1968. Started farming helping my dad. And so he farmed the land for almost six, over 60 years, and I farmed my portion of it almost 60 years. We are proud and old family, and we are unable to maintain the farm anymore. I think it's most, it's a little over 80 acres, and it's idle now, and growing up in undesirable trees, bushes, and weeds. And I think we just, we think it can be, be put to buttery years. I think Liberty is a good company. I think they'll do a good development, and it'll benefit us, it'll benefit Liberty, and I think it'll benefit the county for more revenue and taxes. And we, like I say, we're, the Little Family is an old and proud family. We think we've served our country well and deserve the right to get our land rezoned and where we can move on to bigger and better things. I'm ready to spend more time with my family and enjoy the rest of our remaining years on this good planet of earth. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service, and we'll get you cash.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anyone that is opposed to this development? Please come forward at this time. Okay, public comment is closed. Who's the official?
District?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Can we have Ms. Battle come back up?
Yes, sir. It is a little chilly.
And I'm not going to add a whole lot of words. Ms. Battle actually summed it up very well earlier, just going through the stages of this development. Originally started out with more town homes than single-family detached homes. And I think this is a great story. And the reason why I say this is a great story, I want to talk about Liberty and I want to talk about the job Ms. Battle did. So originally, when Liberty first brought this project a couple of years, we started out on a very rocky footing. It was very rocky footing. But I want to commend Liberty because in those two years, they have, I think, listened to the board, they have listened to the residents of Henry County, and they have done a great job of changing their product to make it something that we can all be proud of as people who live in Henry County. Once they decided to, I think, change their product and listen to what we ask, they've been on a very good track record. I think they've gotten three developments approved in the last year, all quality developments, stuff that we can be proud of, not only next year, but 20 to 30 years from now. If you don't mind, can you go, I don't know if you could just go through. I want to point out a couple of things on the conditions. Kenta, can you bring those back up?
I just got a question about the butterflies.
Okay. You can ask my, you're doing that.
What are we getting the butterflies from? I don't know where the butterflies are coming from.
Yeah, they have butterfly plants.
Okay.
Yes, and the butterflies gravitate towards the plants.
To those plants.
My sister who passed was a butterfly aficionado, and so I have some of those at my home. So they come to the plants.
Really? Yeah, okay.
Can you go to the second page, Kenta? Next one. Yeah, so actually, right here. Yeah, so a couple of things. One, we look at number 11, so all town home units should have one five-pound fire extinguisher. And the reason I'm bringing this up, and I also want to talk about the amenities, landscaping, the reason I wanted to point this out is, I think Liberty has gone above and beyond what some of the other builders have done. They have done some stuff, I think, that, you know, helps with the fire aspect of it. And also, when you start talking about the amenities, I asked for the putting green, and they put that in there, but some of the butterfly garden, some of the other things they did, they did that without me even asking for it. So I want to commend you, I want to commend the job Ms. Battle did, Falcon Design, and also Liberty Homes. I think you have given us a great quality product. And you even had patience, because we're going through an airport area master plan, and I asked you all to wait so that you can actually talk to the consultants for the master plan to make sure that this development would go in coordination with our master plan, and you did it. Did it without fuss. The master plan consultants blessed this project, and I just want to say I thank you for working with me, working with the district, and working with the residents of Henry County. I think this is a great addition to our county, and I just want to commend you for the job that you've done. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. And with that, I'd like to move to approve the project.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. There's no further discussion, all in favor? Motion carries. Next item, is this the last item, Kenta? We've got two more. Okay, all right.
For Lennar of Alpharetta, Georgia. A rezoning request before you is for property located along Willow Lane. On both sides of Willow Lane, south of Jonesboro Road, consisting of 54.56 plus or minus acres. Property is currently zoned RA and mixed use, with a future land use map designation of high-density mixed use. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant team. Jonesboro Road is here on this left side. The bottom portion indicates 181 town homes and 78 detached cluster on the north side, rather, I'm sorry, top side of this plan here. Total site has 259 front and rear entry units. Here are some comments that we've received from various departments, with public safety here for the police, given the number of units, two additional officers, as per the calculations and formulas presented by police department. And with fire, with those similar calculations, 1.16 additional fire staff to maintain that adequate service level. Additional comments from the school board and some of our DOT and transportation planning departments. I do want to add that Willow Lane is the subject of a future widening project. As part of staff's conditions, we do have a requirement to dedicate additional right-of-way, 20 feet of right-of-way on either side of Willow Lane to accommodate the widening plans. A portion of the subject property was rezoned back in 2009. That is that MU, that mixed-use piece for commercial and multifamily residential uses. The previous conditions of that approval do not require right-of-way dedication and do not provide a unit count maximum. A portion of the subject property is located within the boundaries of the highway corridor overlay district, and we need to meet those standards therein. We'd also need to meet the design standards for multifamily developments. Due to the number of units, a traffic impact study would be required prior to permit application. Here are some elevations that were provided by the applicant team. These on the top indicate the front-entry town homes that are to face Willow Lane. Underneath are the front-entry town homes elsewhere in the subdivision, more interior to the subdivision. Shown here are the front, I'm sorry, the rear-entry single-family units to front Willow Lane. And those elsewhere to be front-entry garage, again, interior to the subdivision. Let me go back to that site plan one moment. The request for 259 units has a proposed density of 12.1 dwelling units per acre net, which is supported by the high-density mixed-use future land use map designation, which would support between eight and 20 units. This is kind of on the lower end there. Again, 259 units, front and rear entry units, 181 town homes, and 78 detached. Once again, Willow Lane is scheduled for widening as a SPOSS six project list, and construction of the widening, I believe, is scheduled for 2027. With that being said, staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request on April 10th of this year. The zoning advisory board did also recommend approval of the applicant's request to RM, multifamily residents. Some of the conditions stipulate right-of-way dedication. Amenities on both sides of Willow Lane, crosswalk placement and installation to the elementary school that is directly south of the property, that'll be with Henry County DOT and SPOSS coordination. Staff review and approval of the elevations. Speaking with the applicant team, we decided to modify condition 10. Previously, condition would specify the number of detached units, the number of town home units, and the total number of units. With this modified condition, we would condition it specifically to the total number of units and the total number of town home units. So in the event the applicant wishes to later on reduce the number of town homes and instead increase the number of single-family, this condition would allow that. 20-foot undisturbed or enhanced landscape buffer around the perimeter of the site, not to include Willow Lane. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
It's a public hearing. Oh, it's a public hearing, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's a public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Steve Moore, Moore Vass Consulting, 1350 Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia, here tonight representing Lennar Corporation on this rezoning request. So I'll try to blow through this because I know you guys have things to do, and it's getting late, but just to touch on what Kenta said, that is the subject property. The land use designation, again, is a high-density residential zone, high-density mixed use supporting up to 20 units per acre. We, I actually had the opportunity to rezone this property back in 2009 to mixed use for the development of a 250-unit apartment complex with 30,000 square foot of retail fronting Willow Lane. Obviously, it was intended to be an all-rental community, as apartments typically are. And so we are, what we are proposing now is to basically almost develop the same number of units, except on both sides of the property, essentially cutting the density in half by splitting that property up along each side. The plan is, so to the south, map south, it's actually to the west, is Carmel Vista Apartment Community. And so what we decided to do, just to transition density from the west to the east, was to go where the apartments are, to move town homes adjacent to that, and then on the opposite side of Willow Lane, to have the single-family detached units. Again, we're proposing 259 total units. These will all be owner-occupied units, they're not intended to be rental units, and there is a 5% rental cap in the conditions, which we are amenable to. So there was some intentionality behind the placement of the density in this layout. the, the placement of the density in this layout. The townhome section, which is, again, on the west side, is a hundred-and-eighty-one units. All of the units that front Willow Lane will be rear-accessed through a private alleyway. So, the intention is to maintain a very nice streetscape. As you travel down Willow Lane, you're not looking at backyards and barbecue grills and swing sets and trampolines. You're looking at the, the, the pretty side of the house. And so, we think that's a, a good approach for that section. And then, there are some of the, as you move further to the west, some of those units in the back outside of that highlighted area, there would be your typical front-accessible units with an amenity area on that side there, and a playfield on the opposite side of the swimming pool. There are, at, working with the commissioner and with staff, there was some intentionality to add additional amenities to both sides of Willow Lane for matters of safety, to keep people from needing to travel across Willow Lane to go visit the swimming pool. So, we've increased the number of amenities to provide, two swimming pools, playgrounds, cabanas, clubhouses, et cetera. These are some of the units, again, that would be rear-accessed, facing Willow Lane, so you're getting that, that look as you travel down the road. And then, again, just some additional views. And then, as you are interior to the site, there would be the front-access units. These are twenty-four-foot wide units. There'll be three and four bedrooms each, ranging from nineteen-hundred to twenty-five-hundred square-foot townhomes. And then, again, amenities, we have the resort-style pool, the clubhouse, large playfield area, dog park playground, several pocket parks, and then guest parking. All of this would be in alignment with the requirements of the multifamily ordinance that the county has, and some views of that clubhouse, and the swimming pool, and then the large playfield that's on the west side of the project, dog park. So then, as you move to the east, that's where we transition to the detached section. These lots are forty-five-foot-wide lots. They meet the cluster housing provisions that's offered under the requested zoning section. There are seventy-eight lots total on that side. And again, all of the units that face Willow Lane, just like across the street, would all be rear-access, so that you have a very appealing street view as you travel down Willow Lane. These houses will range from two-thousand to twenty-two-hundred square foot of heated space. And again, as you move interior to the neighborhood away from Willow Lane, there will be your typical front-entry garages on those units. So, again, to try to honor some safety and convenience of the residents in this community, we've added a second, a second amenity section on this side. So, in this center roundabout would be another pool/ cabana area with a swimming pool, playground, and the like, on-street parking, guest parking within these, another dog park. We offer two access connections on each side of Willow Lane. So, obviously, as Kenta mentioned, the Willow Lane is going through a widening and four-laning in this section. Actually, I was talking with my, my client, who actually was involved in the original construction of Willow Lane when it was built back in two thousand and five. And I stood here almost twenty years ago, in a couple of months, to rezone property that required the construction of the initial phase of Willow Lane. And the owner of this property at the time donated that hundred-foot right-of-way that currently exists today. So, I understand staff needs an additional twenty feet on either side, which the owner and the developer is willing to donate at no cost to the county. And I do think that is a very generous offer because it, I mean, obviously with the, the density that's already entitled to this property, that has a value. So, we are volunteering to donate that property. It's almost two acres of land. We have a lot of road frontage to there. So, but we do have two accesses there. That shows and reflects the two acres of right-of-way donation. And I'll just play this video real quick, that kind of give you a flavor of, of what we're looking at. We have worked with the commissioner, with staff, to try to get the architectural styles of these buildings in align. I think we are very close. I think we've made a lot of changes over the last month to try to bring these into something that's more in liking with the county, just like I've heard in the past three or four zonings. So, I appreciate having that opportunity to try to bring this, this thing to something that you guys want to see. So, again, the, the front-entry, I mean, the rear-access, front-facing townhome units as you're traveling down Willow Lane, and then as you move in the back, more of those. And we also understand staff has that same condition to require planning and zoning, and the commissioner to have the final say-so in the elevations. And we are willing to continue to have those dialogues. If these need some minor adjustments, we'll continue to have that discussion to try to get this thing where you need to be. So, that is our request. In closing, again, just as a reminder, the property, half of the property is already entitled and zoned for residential, for multifamily residential, for rentals. We're trying to convert that area, generally the same number of units, but for a for-sale product. We're under the density that's allowed. We're actually at five units per acre gross. We have a significant amount of open space in, in the back west or eastern section and southern section of that property. Convenient access to the new school. We've agreed to work with the SPOST and the school board to provide safe pedestrian access from and to that school. We've received staff recommendations with their conditions, which are acceptable to us, receives ZAB recommendation of approval. And with that, I will stop talking and be prepared to answer any questions when the time is right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, Stephanie, if you would reset the clock. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this development? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Tina Coria, six-sixty Chambers Road, McDonough, Georgia. And I just wanted to state that, yes, I'm opposed to this. We were opposed when it was at planning and zoning because of the density. In addition, there's, there's a deed issue going on here because the school, actually, the school board owned that property where they donated the school. We also, as you all know, prior to you changing the densities, this did not have that capability. You could not have, the apartments that we have now were saturated there. You have just saturated that area, and all you have to do is go there and see. It's all been clear-cutted. I, I just ask you on behalf of Conserv Henry, knowing that my children graduated from Eagles Landing, those are also failing schools. You're, you're start having new school there, but it's going to need to be expanded. You're just not really thinking through, you know, I apologize for disagreeing, but you're not thinking through because you, you literally have made our life very, very difficult on Mount Carmel and on Jonesboro Road because of these excessive apartments. And I just wish that you all would, at minimum, make them all be townhomes and make them all owner-occupied. Thank you.
Okay, public comment is closed. I'm confused. Are apartments going here or are townhomes going here?
Townhomes.
Okay, yes. Steve, if you would come forward. I mean, it was some slide, I guess you showed of some apartments, but no apartments are going here.
No, ma'am. That was what was zoned in two thousand and nine, was for apartments and mixed use. And what we're proposing is to rezone it to RM. No apartments, just fee-owned townhomes and detached residential. No apartments.
So, single-family homes and townhomes?
All single-family homes.
Okay, no apartments. Okay.
No apartments.
All right.
Five percent.
I just wanted to get this.
And as far as the school or the deed questions, I think the owner of this property sold a portion of it to the Board of Education for the, for the, for that school. There's clean title, we've surveyed it, run title, that's, that's, that's not, that's a non-issue.
Okay, thank you.
No, no portion of this rezoning request would relate to the school board property.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
I just want to thank Steve, well, as the property owner, because as Ms. Coria stated, for its density, this actually brings the density down. Because as it stands, property owner could go apply for a permit and put a whole bunch of apartments. But I want to thank him for not doing that, being a good community partner, and trying to keep the density down, and working with us to bring a good product. I know they submitted, and I've rejected, they submitted, I've rejected. And so, just thank you for your patience and your willingness to try to be a good partner, team player, and ensuring that we are bringing a great product to Henry County. Willow Lane is a highly-traveled corridor, and I wanted to make sure that as people are driving, that aesthetically it was appealing. And so, again, just thank you for all the efforts, the meetings that we've had to ensure that we bring the best we can. I know that it's a little more expensive to provide amenities on both sides of the road, but I had a concern with kids trying to cross the road since it is such a high, highly-traveled corridor, that they should be able to stay on their side of their residence and enjoy amenities. So, thank you for working with us on that.
Yes, sir.
And if there are no other...
I, I, I do, I have, I have one other question. I'm sorry. I, I'd like to ask for the fire chief to come forward and to, um, I guess, comment about the, the trails?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and our pillars of the great County of Henry. So, one of our concerns in the fire department comes down to when we see these trails coming, which are great, obviously. However, with more and more of these trails coming in, we have more challenges with people who either have become injured on those trails. Our concern is having the ability to get to those folks. And obviously, we can't take a fire truck or ambulance to those locations, having some sort of all-terrain vehicle where we can get to these folks that may be injured or may be lost on these trails. And that is our concern from fire rescue. Wanted to have opportunity to be able to bring that up and bring that to your attention as you all look to potentially approve some of these divisions, subdivisions and build-outs that have those trails.
Okay, then. And so, I guess, as, not only just in the subdivisions, but, you know, we also have a trails master plan as well. You all need to be part of, I guess, that, that planning portion of it. But in looking at this, what recommendations can you all come up with that you can share? Because it's gonna be, you know, we are promoting trail connectivity and mobility for our, our residents, as opposed to having to put a car on the road. If they could have trails, sidewalks, all of this, where everything, we're trying to make the county more walkable as well.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am, I certainly agree. And I think that's absolutely a great plan. And I think, I think it's some of the, getting help with some of our builders to be able to get some of those all-terrain vehicles as part of the, the, the proposals they turn in. I think Chief Black mentioned that earlier. Once we get those submitted, then we're gonna make recommendations back. They can help us with some of those type vehicles. We have a few in our system. However, obviously, as the county becomes more connected through trails, we're gonna need additional units. And I think as they build these, these areas out, getting help there will really help us out a lot, so we can respond. Hopefully, we have no issues, but obviously, as we add more people to the community, there are greater chances of these type events taking place.
Okay. So, County Manager, is there something that we can put in a condition or, or, you know, I guess, as, as the private, I guess, communities are building trails in their community as well, that they make sure that they have a vehicle that is, that vehicle that you're talking about as, as part of a condition to have a trail?
Yes, ma'am. We're gonna work with our planning team and the county attorney to see if we can make it a condition where they can provide a home for an ATB or a side-by-side access.
For public safety, both PD and fire, with the goal to offset that with impact fee credits, similar to roadwork that's being done. And our goal would be to have one of these vehicle types in every district, so there's a fast response when necessary.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, another problem. Yes, I would just like to make a motion to approve, approve the rezoning for the Willow Lane property located in Land Lots Ninety-seven and One-Twenty-Eight.
Okay. And, and I, I know you got, we got a motion and a second. I have one question, and maybe I missed it when I, I stepped out. Is the road widening that's going along there, is that a condition for development?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am. That is condition seven.
Okay.
And I think that actually should say shall dedicate up to, yes, never mind. Thank you, Steve. Yes, that is correct, as presented there, condition seven. I did want to add to condition eight, just for clarity. Owner-developer shall coordinate with Henry County DOT and SPOST, and be responsible for the placement and installation of sidewalks to elementary school. Installation of the crosswalk shall be completed prior to issuance of the first building permit. Just wanted to add that quick addition there.
Yeah, I meant prior to building. I thought it was going to, is there anything in here?
I think it's on the next slide.
Okay, it's on the next one.
And that is in reference to which one?
For before they go vertical, the road widening.
Um, yes. Condition seven, I'm sorry. Condition three there, is that what you referred to? Building permits, no building permit shall be issued unless construction of Henry County.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was there.
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's, that's, okay, all right.
So, I got a question. And it goes back to my concern for the single-family units. The pictures that we have, provided in the packet, pictures that were provided in that are definitely not something that I can say that I could approve. I know there's a condition in there that says that they will have to go through staff for approval.
Correct.
I just want to know what reassurances do we have that we're not going to end up with that product? God forbid Commissioner Price wasn't sitting there, and we have another commissioner that comes in, for whatever reason, that we're not stuck with the product that we see there. Because it's the same house replicated.
I, I'll just say, on behalf of Lennar, I think in, to Rick Martin's point, who got up and spoke on behalf of Pulte, all of these builders have a very similar approach in that monotony to avoid that placement of that same house over and over again, side-by-side. And the only variation is you flip a garage or something like that. I think that there's a, isn't that same condition in here about that you can't replicate the same thing more than three, five times or something? I can't remember if it was in this one. I know it's been in a lot of zonings. But, to your point, I probably have done a disservice by placing those buildings for purposes of trying to give you guys information of what this thing's gonna look like. And I may have done a poor job of just not providing that variety accurately. But I could tell you, Lennar has a goal of providing a very aesthetically pleasing community that does provide that variety. And we've been willing to give to the commissioner and to staff the authority to, you know, approve those elevations and the placement of those houses. Is that condition in there?
That condition is not in there. However, there is very similar language in the design standards for multifamily development.
Right.
So, we'll, we'll add that as a condition, just pulling the language from what's already existing in our code.
Yeah, because I mean, I mean, if you look, I mean, it's there, I mean, it's all this same house.
No, I agree. It, it does. And I'll, and I'll take, I'll, I'll take that. Because I think that I can have a conversation with my renderer that he needs... that he needs to do a better job of providing some variety.
So, we're reassured, we're not going to have the same house over and over again?
Correct. That will be added as a condition.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, that be, I guess I have another question. I know we got a motion and a second, but it will be determined by staff. It was something that had, where it had to be approved by the commissioner as well, and commissioner?
Well, that's not in the multifamily code, that would appear.
Okay.
If you want a commissioner, I guess, architectural review by staff is in the code, but if you want a commissioner as well. Is that what you're requesting?
Yeah, I mean, because I struggle, I'm with DeAngelo, I'm struggling with the, I'm struggling. And we had this meeting and I struggled in the meeting with this. And so, I just want to make sure that it is not going to be the same.
The same as what was presented or the same one after the other?
Like a cookie cutter.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's what I, again, it looks like we may have failed in the delivery of the graphics. That is not the intent. And again, with staff having the ability with the commissioner to approve the elevations and the placement, and we're willing to accept the condition of, you know, if we needed one that's stronger than what's in the current code.
Yeah, so, if you would, we could approve the zoning tonight, but I had a condition that says that prior to, they can provide a plan book to the board commissioners that you can come back and see and vote on at a later date. So, prior to them submitting for permits, when we do our architectural review, we can bring it back to the board and then you all can see it.
No, why can't you and the commissioners decide?
Well, that's what we normally do.
I don't think it has to come back before the board.
That's what we normally do.
I'm just saying, just make sure that, you know, that...
Condition is in there.
The condition is that you all review it.
Yes, ma'am. So, that's what we normally do. So, I thought you all wanted something a little bit stronger.
No, I know. I just want to make sure that it's not the same.
Okay, I got you.
Make sure it's not the same.
No problem. Also, can you go back, the condition that was added? We need to put that back into the motion to make sure it's part of the entire motion. The condition you asked for, I think Commissioner Angelo...
I think Commissioner Angelo.
So, the condition I asked for?
Yes.
Was to make sure we're not replicating the same house repeatedly over and over again.
Which I think is covered in the ordinance.
Okay.
And that it's going to be a different materials and stuff. Because right now, like I said, when everything that we're presenting is the same house with the same door in the same place, the same garage in the same place.
Right. So, yeah, you will have various elevations that will be presented. We will make sure of that.
Summate, Chair, if I may. Staff, can you all please pull the condition from the previous zoning request, read it into the record so that the board can act on this rezoning request? They don't want assurances, they just want a zoning condition that states there will not be a duplication of homes. So, Kenta, if you can just come up with some language, I think we did it on a previous rezoning, state that there's already a motion and a second on the floor. We're going to amend it to add that condition and the board can take action.
Thank you, county manager.
Yes, ma'am. Give me one moment. That language is in our code. Quickly pull that up. Tacking onto condition nine there, language akin to a no home shall be replicated within, I believe it's six homes within a row. I'm sorry, looks like we'll be pulling from another case. Fourteen here, no lot shall be permitted to have the same house plan replicated within three lots on either side of a public or private street. We'll tack that language onto condition nine there. Location, let me add some additional language here. A developer and/or builder shall provide a site plan indicating both commenced and proposed house plans for each respective lot in a six lot vicinity for the purpose of review at the time of permit application. Location change of the garage from one side of the plan to either, commonly referred to as reversing the plan, shall not be deemed to satisfy this requirement.
Thank you.
And I would like to submit the motion with the added language to the condition.
And that, to be clear, does that also add the added language to condition eight there regarding clarification on that crosswalk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Stephanie, you got that? Okay. So, he amended his motion.
Second.
Got a second. No further discussion, all in favor. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is extending the moratorium.
Okay, good evening again. As you may know, Henry County is in the middle of two major planning efforts that will help shape our future growth. The countywide unified land development code rewrite and the ongoing master planning process in the airport area. To give staff and consultants time to complete these efforts, staff wishes to consolidate and extend our existing moratorium. This means the current county residential moratorium will continue in place until the ULDC rewrite is finalized. The airport area moratorium, which has covered residential, commercial, and industrial development, will remain in effect and be combined with the countywide moratorium. Together, these actions allow us to pause new rezonings and large scale developments and proposals until the updated guidelines, standards, and master plans are completed. The goal is not to stop growth, but to ensure that when development does move forward, it is aligned with a clear vision, coordinated infrastructure, and legally sound regulations. We appreciate the patience of our citizens, developers, and business community as we work through these critical planning initiatives. These moratoriums are short term tools to make sure Henry County's long term growth is well planned, sustainable, and beneficial to everyone. The original resolution that's in your packet calls for 270 day moratorium. However, with that said, we ask that the moratorium commence at 12:01 PM, 12:01 AM on September 24, 2025, and expire at 11:59 PM on March 23, 2026, resulting in 180 day extension. With that, I will take any questions.
Is there any questions from the board? Hearing none, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Chair, this is listed as a public hearing.
Oh, geez, okay.
Sorry, yes.
It is?
Yes, it is. We advertised for it, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come and speak in favor? Please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Of the moratorium?
Tina Coria, 660 Chambers Road, McDonough, Georgia. And I'm not speaking against it or for it. I'm just saying that the last time you did it, we have been here, we thought we were going to have a year, and you just keep coming through. And you were saying that's how many are in the pikes, and it feels like that we're back there again, where you're doing a moratorium so you can get more things through, when we really needed to have a moratorium. That means a moratorium where nothing comes for that time so that we can regroup and regain and make a difference, especially with our future land use map and our future land use strategies. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Any comments?
No, I guess my only comment is, Ms. Coria, I understand what you're saying, but we do have a legal obligation. We have to hear what people have applied for. So, we can't just pick and choose to not hear what people have applied for. I totally understand where you get it from. And we're, that's why we're trying to do the things we're doing to get to what you're asking for. But once people have legally applied, we have to hear what they've done. So, that's why we're cleaning out our backlog. You'll see less and less cases. Matter of fact, I guess the hope is that we're, all of our cases are heard before the end of the moratorium.
That's the hope.
Yes.
In addition to most of the conditions that you hear, it's also going to be a part of the updated ULDC.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we're kind of incorporating some of those things already.
Okay.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Okay, great. So, we got a motion?
Second.
And a second. No further discussion, all in favor? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
County manager, I do have a, I think we got a couple of requests, right? I would like to call for a vote to make a formal request to the planning and zoning department to bring forth a ULDC amendment and a resolution to the Board of Commissioners at the October evening BOC meeting addressing an animal sanctuary use.
Say it one more time, Chair, the last part.
Okay. What's the last part? Okay, so...
I didn't hear it.
Okay, so...
I'm clear, thank you.
You know what I'm talking about? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. So, I'd like to call for a vote. Could I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any questions of...
Yeah, can you explain to me what you're trying to get down, please?
Okay. There has been a request from the Hitchcock family to do a bird sanctuary.
Not to me.
Okay. And so, they want to be able to treat wounded birds and be able then to release them back into the habitat. They have been approved by DNR to do this, but we have nothing in place that allows for animal rehabilitation in that format. So, that's the purpose of the request.
Okay.
Okay. So, I got a motion and a second. Any other just questions? All in favor? Okay. Is that good? And then Commissioner Price had something as well.
Yes, on the 8th of September, 2021, there was a resolution that was signed about tethering of animals. So, I would like to ask staff to revisit that, bring in some more information back to us so that we can kind of revise that and make it a little more applicable to, or stringent, if you will, on the tethering of animals.
Yes, sir. We will bring both of those back during the first meeting in October.
Okay, thank you. County manager...
I'm sorry, staff has advised second meeting in October.
Correct, correct. Second meeting in October. So, any comments from you county manager?
And I hope I pronounced that tethering, tethering.
We understand, yes, sir. My apologies, and I'm going to go extremely fast because I know it's been a long evening, but thank you to everyone that came out to the District One Community Cleanup Day this past Saturday. We did pick up a total of 43 bags, and that is the lowest amount so far, which means there's less litter in District One. Congratulations, Commissioner Wilson. But I am confident that the mighty District Three will end on a bane. And so, our next and final cleanup day is on Saturday, October 25 for District Three. So, we will post information, we'll have signs throughout District Three, and you will be able to go to the county website to get more information if you want to sign up. Early voting for the November 4 election begins on Tuesday, October 14. It runs through October 31. And specific times and locations can be found on the Henry County website. The last day to register to vote in the November 4 municipal election is October 6. So, I just wanted the public to be aware of that. And then finally, well, finally, I think I have one more. District Two Commissioner Vice Chair, Neet Robinson, is hosting a town hall meeting on this upcoming Monday, September 29, at 6:30 PM at the Hen Valley Senior Center in Stockbridge. And the topics will include planning and zoning, senior services, and parks and recreation. So, if you are interested in hearing what's going on in District Two and particularly those topics, please join us for that town hall meeting on next Monday. And then finally, the Henry County Recycling Center is hosting an electronics recycling event on Saturday, September 27, which is this Saturday, from 8 AM to 2 PM. Additional details can be found on the Henry County government's social media pages. Madam Chair, that ends my comments.
Awesome. Anyone sign up for public comment, staff?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the August 19 BOC meeting at 9 AM on the Milledge?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, okay. Got a motion, a second, all in favor? Okay. Our upcoming meetings and event, October 7, is a regular scheduled BOC meeting at 9 AM. And October 21, 2025, regular BOC meeting at 6:30. And meeting adjourned.